We're opening the October 6 regular meeting with Simsbury Zoning Commission. And the first order of business is seating alternates if necessary. One of our members, Diane Madigan, is in Las Vegas today, so. Don't we wish you were just.
On the record.
But. Dagny will sit for her tonight, so. We have six voting. So the commission business for tonight, and the only business, is to hear the proposals of three consulting firms that have submitted proposals to do. An up, a review corrections upgrade of our zoning code. And I'm not going to talk too much about this because George did all the work, George and the staff, but we had six responses. They did interviews with all six and recommended three for presentation to the commission. And that's what we're doing tonight. So we're having the three presentations. This is a meeting that's open to the public, but it is not a public meeting. The distinction being, public meetings are for the purpose of enabling public input, public discussion, public participation. We're not doing that. We're doing the public meetings so the public can be aware and face to face and to hear exactly what's going on. In any case, that said, we're going to do each group. We have anticipation of a forty-five minute block for each group. And anticipation of about twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes at the most for the presentations. And then fifteen minutes of questions from the commission. So during the course of their presentations.
It's just, it'll be okay.
No, that's not a good idea.
I'm not doing that.
I didn't notice anything.
You're right, you know what? Just focus. You're right. I promise. So during the course of the presentations, we want the commission members to hold their questions. Make notes to yourself or something. When the presentations end, then there will be fifteen minutes for questions. And we'll go from there. Keep in mind, our attention tonight is not to come up with a ranking of the three firms. What we're after tonight is to identify the strongest match, the proposal that was the strongest match for the request for proposals that we sent out. So again, we're not looking to try to get to who's number two, who's number three. That doesn't make any difference. All we are after is the best of the three. So with that in mind, George.
He just vaporized, just like that.
Okay, and then I'll wing it a little further. Yeah, well, I think I'll stop there. What did you want to say?
Oh, I have, I don't want to say anything. I would introduce.
There you go.
Francisco and Ken from, from FHI and, and let them go.
Fine.
And would the commission prefer that we speak casually from here? Or would you prefer that we speak from a position of authority at the podium?
You'd be surprised how little authority that carries here.
Yeah, if we're over there, then you have to kind of look at us speak and then look at the president back and forth and that gets tired. It's like tennis. Gets tired. Okay. Very good, very good. Ken will get us started and then I'll do most of the work.
Great. Well, thank you for having us here today. We are FHI Studio and you'll see now it says now I make. We had a merger with a larger sort of engineering firm, so we have the same staff, same people that have been working together for over thirty years in the Connecticut region, based in Hartford. But we have a much larger, deeper bench of more on the infrastructure engineering side of things. But our, our group that has worked together on the plans you'll see and the zoning you've seen, we've worked together for many years. Francisco and I, I think, are going up on over twenty years of working together. Maybe much dismay of our wives because we're maybe happier at the time working together than anything else. But we're in Hartford, Connecticut.
You work.
Hartford, Connecticut. So I live in, you know, West Hartford, Hartford and yeah, I have an office in downtown Hartford. Which is where primarily all the work will be done out of and our staff will be based in Connecticut. So. I will serve as our senior advisor and principal with the firm and as head of working with Francisco here, who we worked with on lots of plans. Our team together have all worked extensively and Nicole, the two Nikoles are newest additions, I guess, you know, over the last three years. But we worked with Rory for over ten years together. We did the Wheatog Historic Document Update Guidebook with Rory a few years ago for Simsbury. And we worked in Simsbury on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan in the past. And are now working with Tom Roy and Adam Kessler on East Coast Greenway Routing Study. So we belong history of working with Simsbury and look forward to another opportunity to work with you and your community. And Francisco, as you'll see, gone through together, lots of experience, but lots of satisfied experience with a detailed approach. So for that, Francisco.
Good. Yeah, thanks, Ken. So we provided you with a proposal that outlines our scope of services. And I, I don't want to use a lot of our time today to go through all the details that's in our proposal. I do have a number of slides that do provide a lot of those details and we put them at the back of the presentation. So if you have any specific questions as we get to the discussion part of this, I'm happy to pull up one of those slides and we can talk about a particular task from our proposal. Essentially, we put together a proposal that responds to exactly what you've asked for, which is an update of your zoning regulations. And we have that experience with many communities in Connecticut. It's work that we've led, that we've done successfully. Some of this work is in progress with a few of these communities. And that includes the city of Hartford. We were on a team. We weren't the prime consultant, but we had a significant role on a team that updated Hartford zoning regulations about ten years ago. It was the first time they'd been updated since nineteen sixty-nine. And it was really, we really transformed the regulations or form-based code elements to the regulations. Town of Glastonbury, we developed design guidelines for them. And we're currently working to rewrite their zoning regulations, much like you're looking to do. Town of Brookfield, we developed guide, design guidelines for their incentive housing zone in their town center that followed a master plan that we did for their town center. City of Danbury, we just completed downtown zoning, TOD zoning, that was adopted in January of this year. And that really transformed how Danbury's regulating development in the downtown. And it's really going to enable more housing to be developed in downtown Danbury at a higher density as well. Town of Enfield, we, similar, several years ago, we did TOD draft zoning regulations for them around their Thompsonville area, which is going to be receiving a Hartford Line train station. City of Bristol, we're currently working with them. We're at the very tail end of our process in rewriting their zoning regulations. It's comprehensive work with some really, really progressive zoning amendments that we're really seeking to enable, to support economic development and enable the development of housing, while at the same time better protecting environmental resources in the city. We're doing same type work for a town of Manchester, a town of Stonington. We're just about complete with their work. We've got a public hearing coming up in December for all the final amendments that we expect to be adopted and passed. Town of Fairfield, we completed a zoning rewrite for them, the first phase of it that was adopted about a year ago. A town of Woodbury, we rewrote their zoning regulations. Town of O'Line, currently working with them. And by the end of the year, we're going to bring the first phase of amendments to a public hearing for adoption. And as Ken mentioned, we've, we've worked here before as well, not in zoning capacity, but in on the East Wheatog Historic District Handbook.
And when was that?
Yeah, that was about, it was pre-COVID. I want to say it was twenty eighteen or nineteen. So what I'd like to talk about and focus on is what may or may not distinguish us from other firms in this type of work. And we really try to take a tailored approach to our work, which means that we work in partnership with you as a commission and with town staff. And we, we become, and I really mean we become a partner in this effort. And by that, I mean, not only do we perform the scope of services that we, we may have agreed to perform and fulfill all the requirements of our contract, but we become a resource for the community. And I have, whether it's the Bristol City Planner, the Town Planner and O'Line, that will reach out to me with zoning and land use questions. And I happily help them navigate that, just because we happen to be working with them actively, even though it's something that's not necessarily written into our scope. So that's where we place our emphasis, is working closely with you, making you as a community a priority, not just one of a number of projects that are in our firm that where you feel like you get our attention part of the time. Our goal is to feel like you have our attention all the time. We're always a resource for you in that your work is always front and center. And, and that's really important to us. In order to do that, we have to be very selective about the projects that we pursue. And we don't chase work all over the place. Most of our work is here in Connecticut. We stay focused on communities that we're near, that we know and that we can provide a high level of service to. While I went through a big list of communities, we never take on more than we can handle or more than we can, than we could feel that we can give all of our resources to. And, and maintain a project schedule and the level of expectations that you would have when you hire a consultant. So that's really at the core of our approach. And that's what FHI had built a reputation around. After, you know, having been around for thirty-five years, as Ken mentioned, we're part of a larger group now. But we started as a one or two-person firm founded out of the West End of Hartford. And that really built the company by providing a high level of service to all of our clients. Okay? All right. I'd like to believe that we understand your needs based upon other communities that I've worked with and based upon what you've asked for in your scope of services. And so my initial take, and I'm sure you could add to this list, or you, there may be some things that you see differently, is that you really need to stay ahead of development demand and pressures with, with your regulations and your, your ability to administer them. You want to be able to accommodate and facilitate the development of housing that's desired and needed by the community. You want to have regulations, procedures and processes that are effective, efficient and fair. We think you probably want to ensure that the zoning regulations are within your zoning authority so that they are legally resilient. That you continue to act as effective stewards of land and community resources. That you support or that your zoning regulations support a diverse and sustainable tax base. That you allow for reuse and redevelopment that will be supported by the community. That you ensure that zoning aligns with, supports the vision and the recommendations of the, of your plan of conservation and development. And, and more at the core of all of this is that you maintain the town's identity as a historic Farmington Valley community. Even though you're a community that's receptive to change, you've evolved a lot. And I say that as a Farmington guy myself, you know, I, I have family here in Simsbury. And so I understand how these communities are, are similar in some ways and how they differ. And I'd, I'd like to believe I, I understand what the concerns of this community are. But ultimately, I think we would need to get to work on this process for me to better understand really what, what the key issues are. We have, as I mentioned, a long track record of zoning work. And our clients have spoke very highly of the work that we've done and the work that I've done, working with them as a project manager on a range of projects. So as I mentioned, we've worked for the city of Danbury. We did their comprehensive plan, followed up by zoning work. And the city planner there who retired last year, you know, she said that we are the best planning firm that she's ever hired. We're at the top of the list. And, and that spoke of my work in managing their project as well. The chair of the stoning, or he's now former chair of Stoneton Planning and Zoning Commission. He, he let us know that he was very happy that they had selected us and that they were working with me as a project manager. The chair of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, she said that we're hands down the best consultant that they had ever hired. And I just got a call from the town planner in Greenwich the other day. Asked me a question, was wondering if I could help them out. We hadn't worked with them for a few years, but these are relationships that we continue to have and we'd like to be a resource for these communities. We, we also work with other consulting firms. Barry Dunn is, is a big company that does a lot of work for municipalities. And they have very good things to say about our firm and about their experience working with me. As well as the city planner at City of Bristol, we, as I mentioned, we're working with them rewrite their zoning regs. They had an opportunity in one of their zones that really decisions needed to be made in the near term. It, the timing of the update wasn't quite there. So we, we prioritized, recommended amendment that would enable really the right kind of development for the right part of town. And we're able to, to figure out how to make that work and get it ahead of all the rest of the zoning rewrite. And, and he wrote me a very nice letter to let me know that the mayor and the director of economic development were really extremely pleased that we were able to make that work. So, like I said, I, that's what I, I would like to believe sets us apart from a lot of our competition is, is the level of service that we provide and our dedication to ensuring that the experience is good for you and the process goes smoothly and you get what you need from it. But we do have all the technical expertise as well needed to do this work. And so we've developed the scope, we have fourteen tasks that will lead you through, take us through every aspect of this project. And ensure that we deliver everything it is that you asked for. And, and we've probably identified some needs that you didn't, you didn't ask for that, that we think based upon our experience are important to address as you're doing this comprehensive zoning rewrite. So project management's really important, the regularity of our meetings with, with you and the town. Community engagement is central to this work in terms of how can we be most effective with that and who does what. It's really important to review all your relevant plans and documents. Your plan of conservation and development is informative for this work. But there's other planning work that's been done that has implications for your zoning. Line by line review of your regulations is exactly what it sounds like. We will take all two hundred plus pages of your regulations and go through line by line and document everything it is that we feel needs to attention. And that in the past has generated four to five hundred comments. And that's work I do personally. And that's the basis by which, that's where we really assess what the needs are and where we should get started and where a good part of our emphasis needs to be. We then go through a process of breaking down the regulations into smaller pieces. Reviewing your uses, your general requirements and provisions, your residential zoning, commercial industrial zoning, your special regulations and overlay districts, sign regs, off-street parking regulations, site and environmental regulations. Simsbury Center Code, which is like a set of regulations within your regulations. And then finally, we package that up into a new document. But it's really important that we break it into these smaller pieces. And so we've developed a schedule that does exactly that. We proposed an eighteen-month schedule. I, I think you need at least eighteen months. I wouldn't, we could, we could take longer if we need to. I wouldn't recommend you go beyond two years because you start to lose momentum. So we've recommended an eighteen-month schedule. I think it's, it's fair. I think it's feasible. And it's something we can adhere to if, if you, if you were to work with us. Within that schedule, there's a very important way in which we work. Once we get to the, the certain groups of tasks. So once we break up to the zoning into its component parts like uses and permit requirements and parking regs and sign regs, we go through a work process that involves our review. And that is the first, yeah, this works great. That's the first part up here. Review. So we review the regs, we discuss with you our findings, we make decisions together. And then based upon that, we develop recommendations in response to the discussion we have with you and with staff. And based upon those recommendations, if we can get agreement as to how to proceed, we'll draft the amended text. We'll draft the, the recommended amendments or redraft that section of the regs into new language. What needs to proceed that is that we are in agreement as to how to handle that aspect of the regulations. And then once we come to agreement through exploring different ideas and different options, we'll draft the regulations. And then we'll set it aside and we'll move on to the next part of the regulations. And that's our process. It's been very successful in every community in which I've worked. It's enabled us to keep going. From time to time, there are issues that are really difficult and we're, we're able to get them to a certain level. If we still don't have agreement, we can set it aside and come back to it, but keep moving with the rest. And so that enables us to maintain our schedule. So the vision for your new regulations, for your restructured regulations, is that they are logical and intuitive in both format and organization. You pick them up, it's clear as how you're, how it is you're supposed to use them, how it is you read them, where you find information. Has minimal redundancy. One of the issues with redundancy in any set of regulations, but particular zoning regulations, is not only does it add length and cause a little bit of confusion, but it adds, it creates opportunities for inconsistency across your regulations. If you're repeating the same regulatory content over and over again, for example, for one district to another, to another, to another. So we try to minimize that in our work. We want to ensure that the regulations are easily updatable by town staff. That you don't need proprietary software or special graphic designer to update the regs. So we, we design and build them as such. Okay? Your spatial standards, anything that's describing physical form is supplemented or augmented by graphics that are intuitive and easy to read. And those are put with the text that, that is describing them. You have definitions, tables and other references that are hyperlinked across the digital document. So it's really easy to jump from one section to another. That the document is effective in both digital form and in hard copy. So whether you're using a paper copy or looking online, either one is effective to use. And then finally, and very importantly, that it's consistent with statute and is resilient to legal challenges. And I'd, I'd like to talk a little bit more about what both those mean. There have been a lot of statutory changes since two thousand. And not a lot of zoning regulations have kept up with all these requirements. And there's a range of public acts and that have been now codified into sections of the statute. Whether it's concerning community residences and your ability to regulate those, non-conforming uses, expiration of a site plan, family or childcare homes, electric vehicle charging requirements. These are all things that the state is really requiring you to ensure that your zoning regulations are compliant with all of this. So that, that's, it's absolutely fundamental to what it is that we need to do. And we've worked with several communities now to do exactly that. And, and they should, your regulation should be legally resilient, which means it should be very difficult and challenging for someone to sue you. All right? Now, someone can sue you if they want to. But you should have a zoning regulations that are held up in court, supported in court and with a ruling in your favor. So in order to do that, they need to be strictly compliant with both statute and case law. And everything I've learned about case law, I've learned through reading much of the work of Simsbury resident Dwight Merriam. And you're, it's incredible. You have really a national expert to that degree in your community. But his, everything I've learned from Dwight, and I've met him on a number of occasions at conferences, only reinforces the need that your regulations need to be within your statutory authority and they need to be legally resilient. So I'd, I'd like to kind of wrap up this part of our presentation by, once again, trying to reiterate what I feel distinguishes us from some of our competition. We have a high level of commitment to serving communities in Connecticut. Ninety-plus percent of our planning work is here in Connecticut. As a project manager, I'll, I'll work closely with you and I bring considerable expertise in rewriting zoning regulations. Every project I just talked about where we've done work, I was the project manager for that. And I did a lion's share of the work on those projects. It wasn't farmed out to junior staff. We have in-house GIS, which is mapping urban design and graphic design expertise. So we can do all aspects of the zoning document and the zoning maps. We have a wide array of subject matter experts, including environmental scientists on staff, engineers, cultural resource experts and, 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 you know, we, we are a fifty-five person team here in Connecticut. And we have an office in New York. We're part of a three thousand person firm that brings expertise from all over the country. And as I mentioned, we have an established track record of drafting and successfully adopting zoning regulations in Connecticut. And to date, I, we have not failed in any public hearing with any zoning regulation amendment that we brought forward, whether it was a single amendment or a comprehensive adoption of an entirely redrafted set of zoning regulations. They've been largely unopposed by the public attending. And on, in, in contrast to that, really supported by many members of the community, including local developers, engineers and land use attorneys, who realize that something that is up to date and more efficient and effective is going to be good for everyone. And I'd like to close with this and. I don't know how, we can make it.
This is amazing. Absolutely amazing. So for anyone in here who involved in the creation of this document, and I hope that as soon as this is available online, people to look at, they actually look at it. The fact that there are examples of everything that is being talked about in here is incredibly helpful. The application over different areas, I mean, this is the single most user-friendly and useful thing that I have seen in six years that I have been on council. This is absolutely a home run. So thank you, all of you, for your work on this.
That was a town council person in Glastonbury speaking about the design guidelines we did for their village districts. Because they were obviously very pleased with our work, we're now working with them to redraft their zoning regulations. But this is our goal. And so we're, we're, we're interested in working with you as a community because we believe that we can provide you with a service and a product similar to this. And it's our goal that your experience is similar to this council person's experience when we're, when we're done with our work. That's, that's really what it is we're, we're aiming to achieve here. Okay? And with that being said, that concludes our presentation. And I'm happy to open it up to questions, comments and discussion.
Does, is there, Commissioner wants to be first with a question?
I, I've got one.
Sure, Dagny.
So by being user-friendly, so there's going to be a digital version, obviously, and then you can print it up if you want. And so if I'm, want to do search.
Yes.
Say, what is the zone, you know, can I build a commercial building? Where do I go? So then you, it's set up to have search mechanism?
So it'll have search in terms of you would be able to search for keywords that will bring you to those relevant sections. It doesn't quite, so first let me talk about how we, how we draft the regulations. Because it's, as I mentioned earlier, it's really important that this document can be updated by staff. Because it's, as I mentioned earlier, it's really important that this document can be updated by staff and that the updates are consistent in format so that everything continues to work properly and it, there isn't just a page that's shoehorned in.
Yep.
And we build them in Microsoft Word because that's a platform that most communities have access to. It's Microsoft Office Platform. We have a lot of other very expensive design software, Adobe products, that we can, we can build something that has some more bells and whistles, but our clients don't have that software. And not only don't do they not have the software, they really don't have the expertise to use the software. So we build it in Microsoft Word, that's the operating, uh that's really the operating document. We export it to a PDF, an interactive PDF. And what that means is that the PDF has hyperlinks. So we install navigation tools where you can click on buttons that will bring you to sections of the document. If there's a cross-reference that says see section seven, you can click on section seven, it will bring you to section seven. Uh you can ser- key, you can search keywords for terms, it will bring you straight to each of those terms in the document. And uh so it's designed to be as user-friendly as possible. And at the same time, you can print it out in physical form and we have got very good graphic designers. So it looks good, you can read it, the font isn't microscopic, right, um and it's legible. We also place a lot of emphasis on getting rid of, trimming the fat, getting rid of dead weight in the regulations. In Manchester, we took them from four hundred and fifty pages, which is a lot, you know, it's it's really too much, to two hundred pages. And we did that without, we did not get rid of regulation, we did not like get rid of sign regs or parking regs. They just had so much redundancy. Each district was treated almost like its own set of regulations and the same content was repeated over and over and over again for every single district, but not consistently. There were inconsistencies and then that led to a lot of confusion about what should prevail. So we wanna, we wanna get rid of that to make this a fairly lean document. That's not our 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 priority. Our priority is to get rid of redundancies so that you don't have any conflicting sets of regulations. Um but one of the benefits of that is to get something that's leaner and therefore easier to navigate. At two hundred pages, a lot easier to get through than four hundred fifty. And fortunately, your regulations now aren't aren't that thick, uh but there's still likely some ways that we can clean it up and make it a a leaner, more efficient and effective document.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um you, in the project schedule, you refer to a steering committee, steering committee meetings. Who is on the steering committee?
So it it differs in the communities we work. In some communities, the entire zoning commission is our steering committee. In other communities, there's a steering committee that maybe has the chair or chair and or vice-chair of the zoning commission, town planner, zoning enforcement officer. Uh if there's a separate planning commission, maybe the chair of the planning commission. So it's really up to the town. Um it 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 really doesn't matter to us as to how the town organizes the steering committee. But the point being, uh we have, on the town side, we'll have a project manager, um you know, presumably George or whoever's appointed, that we're interfacing with for the project management of the of the planning process. But we need a larger group of people to help make decisions. And that's really the intended role of the steering committee.
Shannon, I would I would I would likely recommend that that the zoning commission play the role of.
Okay. Thank you.
Full committee.
And that's what we've done in the past.
I think that's, I think that's the best approach.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Um you, your quote is a hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred over eighteen months. You you generally come in on time and on budget?
Always on budget, always on budget, always. We never ask for more money unless you ask for services that are outside our scope of services. So we always finish our work, the budget is never the issue. With respect to the timeline, we hold up our end of the timeline in terms of the fact that if we said it's gonna take this long for us to do a line-by-line review and we'll have it done by this point in the schedule, we do that part. What we don't have control over is uh decision-making on your part, um whether or not you wanna bring uh the final set of uh regulations through one public hearing process and one vote or you wanna break it up into pieces and extend it over a longer period of time. Whether you want more time to consider some of the potential amendments to the regulations, all of that could extend the schedule. Right? We think you need a minimum of eighteen months and and while acknowledging it very well could go up to twenty-four months and we don't recommend going beyond that. Okay?
Uh also, you said that you would assure that the regulations are legally compliant?
Yes.
Uh could you explain how you do that? I didn't see any in-house legal staff on in your presentation. Do you have in-house legal staff? Do you?
We we do, we have an attorney we work with on retainer. Uh it's Peter Olson for Land Use and Conservation Council. He's out of Woodbury, Connecticut. He's working with us on a number of projects right now. Uh we would bring him in as needed or if needed. Uh it's a little, it's some communities in which we work, uh the court counsel, uh the town, the town attorney really wants to play that role. I could tell you that I, Peter's not making a lot of money off of us 'cause I don't end up leaving him with a lot of work to be done, right? We've we've been doing this long enough that we we know what, when we're within our statutory authority, we understand case law, myself and my staff fairly well. So we're we're usually getting a set of regulations that is ninety-nine percent there in terms of uh ninety-nine percent of the content. We have no question that it's solid from a statutory or legal perspective. And maybe one percent, we have some questions as to uh is this beyond the authority or is the way this is worded, is this the best way for it to be legally resilient in terms of its wording? And we, so we have resources that we could bring to that and uh if your, if your town attorney is interested as some land use expertise, they could also play that role or or both.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
All right.
Tucker, do you?
So if.
Probably about max of ten more minutes.
All right. If I hire a lawyer to say, do a trust document, they have sort of cookie cutter language. So I assume you have similar cookie cutter, you know, here's a R forty reg and here's, you know, that they're all pretty similar across Connecticut and since you've already done these, you know what's legal and what isn't legal. So you're not reinventing the wheel, but you are meticulously going through our document and weeding out to make it more efficient and not redundant and to change some language. And so, in other words, you already know what you're doing.
We we do.
You know?
We we do, but uh every community we were working in, we really are reinventing the wheel.
So how different do you find one town's regs from another?
Very, extreme, extremely, extremely. There there's certainly consistencies across the board. And from time to time, I see a page that has all of exactly the same language because in the late sixties, they're begging, borrowing and stealing from each other, right? And and but each community is incredibly unique and not just their their zones they have, their approach to regulating land use, their processes and procedures. Uh there are three or four different terms used for special permits or special exceptions or special exemptions. Uh each community is unique. So we do have a standard process. It's really more of a checklist that we follow. And we certainly have a bank of of language that we can pull from. Um I definitions is an example. I I have a a document of definitions that's probably thirty pages long now where we just accumulate them from community, community 'cause none of the zoning regulations or communities in which we're working have a comprehensive set of definitions that defines every use in the community, which you really should do. So we certainly have things kind of in the bank that we could pull from, but all of that needs to be tailored to your community, all of it. So we really are, we've got square wheels and triangle wheels and round wheels and uh it 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 really is, each one is unique and and I wish it were as simple as having just kind of a standard form and then we just plug in the variables about your community that make you unique and we just shove it into that format and it all populates. And maybe AI will be there in about five years, but it's not today. And so i- each community is unique and we we really are drafting a product that's custom to your community.
Um so after you've done the review of our regulations, can you kind of describe what a like working session, if we were the board sitting here, would be like?
Okay, this is important. Yeah.
Feels like it is.
As I mentioned, we do a line-by-line review. I, that can be, I can flag three, four, five hundred items, sometimes ten comments a page. We usually do that in Microsoft Word in the comments feature. A lot of it's straightforward. I basically, I make comment, this is how this has to change. It's really, it's cut and dry. A lot of times, there's a question mark at the end of my comment. So then I put together a a summary, a summary report of that line-by-line document that identifies all the issues that really need to be discussed. And typically, we'll run that through the town planner first, um and staff. And we can resolve a lot of those 'cause they know, they have those answers, they know how it works or should work. There'll still be issues that are open items that are like, we really need to bring this to the commission, see what their, get their take on it. So typically, at that point in the process, we come back to you with something that's already been filtered and processed down. Um it needs to be something that's manageable for meeting to meeting. These meetings typically are two upwards of three hours long, um you know, where we get a tremendous amount of work done because we know what what it is that we need to ask you, what we need input on. We get you that information ahead of time and we come to the meeting and they're productive and effective meetings for that reason. Uh so that's where we start. And then, as I mentioned, we go into this work cycle for each of the, each of the areas of your regs. And we start with the basic review of discovery. Okay, we reviewed your regs, here are some of the issues, deficiencies, here are some of the needs, here are some of the options. We have discussion about that. We can come to agreement as to direction you wanna head, if you wanna open things up, tighten things down. Then we'll go ahead, ba- based on your feedback, we'll draft that whole section, we'll redraft it or s- or portions of that section. Come, provide that to you for your, for review in advance of a meeting and then come back and have a discussion. It, is this right? Do do we get it right? Is is there anything that needs work? All right, and if we come to agreement on that, we set it aside and we keep moving forward with the same process all the way through the document, really from beginning to end.
And we would be covering like, like um groupings of things that are kind of related in each of those things and then putting that aside and then going to the next thing like that.
By example, we'll, we'd take all of your residential zones and residential uses and package that up into one series of meetings, one meeting. And then we'll move on to commercial and industrial and then parking would all be one discussion and signs part of another.
And so it's, it's an education process and a buy-in process. So you don't come to the end like, oh, what is this, do it three weeks later. You're like, oh, I know exactly what this means, this is what we agreed to. And obviously, commission changes or evolves over time, but hopefully that institutional memory carries forth that you really feel you own these. It's not here at the end, good luck trying to interpret it all, we think it's good enough.
Uh tell me something, Bill, there was an earlier comment that had to do with uh the updating, a periodic updating can be easily done by town staff. Um how do you describe or define what easily done by town staff means?
It it starts with, uh we put together a a very brief tutorial about how the document works, how to use features of the document. Uh we have a meeting with whatever, whoever staff may be maintaining the document. Some communities, the CEO really volunteers, I got this. Or sometimes it's administrative staff or the town planner themselves.
So you reference this to do with preparation and change to the document and it doesn't necessarily have to do with the content. The content is another issue.
Yeah, yeah, so they need to understand how the document works. Because as I mentioned earlier, the the document's fairly sophisticated in that things are linked throughout the document. We design the document so that if you add content or remove content, all, everything updates automatically. All the cross-references update, the section numbering updates, the formatting updates, everything updates. You don't have to go through manually and change numbers or page numbers. Table of contents automatically updates. You have to know how to use those features. So we we show staff how to use it and then I operate a hotline. Uh I I get, still get phone calls, hey, how did you, how do we do this one thing when I update it?
Yeah, I don't wanna belabor this, but I was interested.
It's really important.
How does, how does the change that the legislature makes migrate to the staff, to the document that they're tweaking? And uh you're not selling the linkage between the state legislature and the staff. You're selling how to tweak the document.
The process, the process. Okay, now that I, yeah, now that I better understand your question, let me also try to, try to answer that. So the legislature's been really active every year for a few years now. And and I think with House Bill five thousand two, which I'm sure there's probably some discussion about, we can anticipate elements of that that did not get passed that were, are gonna be revisited. That has implications for your zoning. Uh to some extent, they may be straight, very straightforward, in which case it's clear uh to you as a commission and to staff how how the zoning regulations need to be updated. And the and the document can be updated and you bring it forward to a public hearing, you adopt those updates. Um in other cases, maybe, maybe there there is something really impactful that requires more work in reconsidering how you regulate and how you zone things. Um in which case, uh we can be a resource for you. Uh you can bring us back to work for you. If that happens while we're doing this update, we, you have us working for you. We've done exactly that. Most of those statutes I had up on the slide were being passed while we were working with communities. And so we just rolled all that into the process.
Thank you. I would say maybe last question. Uh you guys mentioned TOD. Do you have any, have you have a lot of experience working with the level of uh mass transit that Simsbury has? Which is, see, not a whole lot. It's like you got, what, I saw what, Berlin on there or was it Bristol? Yeah, so they got.
Bristol.
Bristol, okay, 'cause they got, I was thinking the, you know, some places have their train lines, Shoreline East, some places have their their fast track. We got, you know, signs on the side of the road, plus.
Woodbury, even Stonington is very limited, even though it's got a. Oh yeah, we have the wide range of of communities. It just, they encounter some of those issues that they're really trying to tailor and understand their zoning specifically. So that's one where many communities are updating it, so, from an example, but the topics are somewhat similar.
You you have town and village centers.
Right.
And the mass transit part of that isn't necessarily there, save uh maybe an ex- Connecticut Transit Express commuter bus here and there. But the same uh needs and pressures, development pressures are there because you do have other types of infrastructure, whether sewer or water or state roadway. And so a lot of the same needs are there from a zoning perspective.
Yep. You can go back in history, there was TOD here at one point, it just, it's left, but the development pattern, some of them are actually here, so.
Yeah, good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Right, please.
Thanks.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank, uh thank you all for the opportunity. We we appreciate it.
I can be sure you'll hear from George, but I I've lost track in my notes. What I wanted to say is there's no assurance we're gonna make a decision tonight.
Sure.
We would like to, but if we don't, um you know, it's not gonna be a shock to you. It could be the next meeting, we'll come back to this three days.
All right.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Okay, let's go.
No, we are, we are. They just said, I, you know, identify relationship issues, but but not a, no, not a, not a, no.
I didn't wanna raise it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Double check it's the right one for you.
Nice to see you.
Yeah.
We're just gonna be casual and speak to you.
That's fine.
Okay. That's, that's, we're gonna see you. Oh, I love a handout. I love handouts.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good start. A handout. I love handouts.
Thank you.
They have, that's a brief handout of their presentation. It's not seven times two hundred and twenty pages.
I'm not doing that. Just not doing it. I got a budget.
In your free time, George.
Guys, what's on, what's on here, Justin?
What's that?
What, what am I, what am I grabbing?
It's just Simsbury. Right. On USP.
Is one of you, Justin?
Yes, me.
I'm Bruce Elliott. I'm the chairman of the committee.
Hi, it's good to see you.
Yeah, it's great to have you guys here.
We're happy to be here.
We appreciate your interest and uh your effort in terms of the response that you made.
Of course, yeah.
We have three firms that we're talking to tonight, all of which are qualified firms. We're looking to identify the firm that presented a proposal that's the closest match to our RFP. So it doesn't mean, if you aren't selected, it doesn't mean that you, you didn't do well. It just means one of the others we felt was a stronger match. It's that simple.
No, we appreciate that.
What we're doing is, you, you know this then too probably, that we're doing forty-five minute time logs. Figure about twenty-five minutes at the most for your presentation. And my fellow commissioners and I will hold our questions until after your presentation concludes. So, you know, if you, you don't have to take twenty minutes. If you can do it quicker, that's up to you, but uh, okay.
That's perfect. We tend to like kind of conversational.
Well, here you go. If you want to just sit right there, if you want to go up to the podium, if you want to walk around, it's up to you, whatever you'd like to do.
That's great.
Okay. Oh, and the other thing is, this is a meeting where we have public audience, but there isn't public participation in the meeting. It's just the public is here and there may be others later, I don't know.
Understood.
But uh, the questions that you get at the end of the presentation will come from this group.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, so we'll introduce ourselves, but uh, we are all with Goman York. My name is Justin LaFountain. I'm an AICP planner. I am the Senior Vice President of Planning and Economic Development for Goman York.
Alyssa Fleming, I'm a Research and Data Analyst with Goman New York.
And my name's Donald Poland, uh, also an AICP planner. I'm Managing Director of Our Planning Practice at Goman York. And pleased to be here tonight.
Do you want me to jump right in, Justin?
Yes. So uh, we have a brief presentation for you. Hopefully it won't take, I don't know, the twenty minutes. But at Goman York, we try and help our clients see the future differently. And in the context of zoning regulations, that probably makes a bit more sense in the context of planning, but in the context of zoning regulations, it's really to create an interactive process of working with you guys through a work session format where we challenge you, where we, you know, discuss your regulations and we challenge you and we try and figure out what is the best, best pathway forward. That can be some, something as simple as, or maybe it's not that simple, but something like content neutrality within the sign regulations to something like, I know in your RFP, you're looking at maybe for a new zoning designation up in the Terracille area. Uh, you know, challenging you as to how you want to approach that next slide. Our approach, creating reality-based solutions as a framework for success. Uh, this goes back to kind of where I've arrived, where our firm has arrived over the course of thirty-plus years of doing this kind of work. We see out there, especially in the planning world, uh, but also in the zoning world, we see a lot of uh, what I would like to call the pictures. This idea, we can draw something nice, we can all get excited about it, but can it actually get built? And usually that relates to finances. Can it be financed and built? And the same is true within zoning. We can write a lot of regulations that are grandiose or pie in the sky. Uh, but at the end of the day, we may end up shut, shutting down opportunity. So trying to stay grounded and trying to s- remain pragmatic as to what's plausible and what's best in the community next slide. This is just a brief overview of kind of recent government-related projects. Everything from master plans to affordable housing plans, to zoning regulations. Uh, I firstly worked on, zoning is always tougher for us to capture in the resume. Uh, I've been writing zoning regulations since nineteen ninety-seven, I believe. I was previously with another consulting firm. Back at that time, I worked on regs in probably a half dozen to a dozen municipalities around Connecticut. I've also written regulations in Louisiana, uh, Ohio, New York State and in Connecticut, under my own banner and under the Goman New York banner. Uh, probably another half dozen or so zoning regulations, so it's been a long part of my career, going back almost, beginning of it. Still me?
Nope, Mike. I'll take it from here. But jump in whenever. Um, so you're going to hear us talking quite a bit about what we call swift, simple and certain policies and regulations. Um, this is a phrase that was coined by, by Don and Mike Goman, one of our principals. Um, and really what we're trying to do is make sure that your regulations are easy to understand, workable. So an applicant can come through the process, really understand what they're going to be doing and provide definite results at the end. We see a lot of regulations that sort of get mired in, you got to do this first, that's going to take some time, then you got to go over here and you got to do this. We like to make sure that it's understandable for the public. The phrase that I always use is a landowner, a resident should not have to hire an attorney to figure out what your zoning regulations mean. So we really want to make sure that the product that we deliver to you is understandable, is intuitive and follows the rest of your regulations. So you don't have one of these things where on page twenty-two, it says you need three feet of setback. But then on page forty-seven, it says, but if you're in this case, you need seven feet of setback. We need to make sure that everybody's on the same page and it's understandable for that. So the first step for this is we go through your current zoning regulations and your zoning map. Uh, we're looking for what works, but really more importantly, what is currently not working. So we want to work with you, we want to work with your town planner, we want to understand where the issues currently lie. And some of those, like Don mentioned, were outlined in the RFP, but we really want to make sure that we're addressing everything. One of the things we like to do is look at what variances have been applied for. If you tend to get a lot of variances for one specific type of um, of use or application, that might be something we want to address. If there's a lot of people looking to do something that currently isn't allowed, maybe it's something to look into. We want to make sure that everything that's strong in your current regulations is retained and we want to make sure that anything that is a weakness is removed. And Don, I don't know if you want to talk about when you were going through the regulations today.
Yeah, actually, I'm really impressed by your regulations. I don't know who's previously worked on them, but they're a really good set of regulations. Uh, they are well-formatted. They are reasonably easy to understand, but they also have challenges within them. You know, very quickly jumping out of the main, there's some outdated text. I think they still reference the two thousand seven P O C D. Uh, you did a really good job. What's that?
It was a good one. We're sticking by it.
Uh, you did a really good job in your sign section of avoiding the issues of content neutrality in your commercial zones and you walked right into it in the residential zones. So it's just kind of like, okay, we've got to look at that. Uh, your special permit requirements, I notice one of them relies on the terminology of uh, what is it, character of the neighborhood's own, which we all know is changed statutorily. I can't say I'm a fan of that. I was a fan of the idea of character. And your regs do a good job in some ways where you describe your zoning districts. You do a fairly good job of explaining them, but you're not explicit in explaining what character is. It's kind of maybe implied. And based on the statutory language now, they need to be explicit if you're going to use character as a criterion. So either we make your descriptions explicit on character or we have to have a discussion around whether or not that word character remains in those uh, special exception criterion. So it's things like that that need to be worked through. Also, just the general kind of making sure everything complies with recent statutory changes. Uh, I did know, notice a few provisions here and there that may not match up anymore, so back to you, Justin.
Yeah, and we'll get into that a little bit too in terms of the new statutes, but just to finish up on this slide. Uh, obviously, we're going to review the rest of the plans and documents that you've put forth over the years. Um, you know, your affordable housing plan, your new plan of conservation development from last year. We want to make sure that we're incorporating those things into your zoning regs. Uh, the zoning regs are sort of a path to make all of your plans a reality, so we want to make sure that we're channeling you in the right direction. Um, and like I said earlier, we want to interact with your staff, with the commission, with the public to make sure that what we're doing is in line with what Simsbury wants. Um, so getting into this a little bit more, this is the idea that the statutes have really changed a lot. Um, in the past twenty or so years, but really once COVID hit, we started seeing a lot of these new regulation, uh, statutory changes. Um, I always mention Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine. That had a, a whole litany of different changes that came into play. And we're trying to make sure that whatever we do here is keeping in line with that. That had things about, you know, accessory dwelling units, parking requirements, multifamily regulations, everything like that. Um, it's funny, I, so part of my work right now is I'm the consultant town planner for the Town and Woods Rocks. We're going through zoning regulations there and we found a, a small section that doesn't quite comply with the statutes because it did change. So we're trying to fix those things and that's what we would want to do for you too. Don mentioned the signage. Do you want to talk with anything more about signage or?
Yeah, just the, the challenges of content neutrality. You know, we went through kind of, I don't know, eighty years of zoning history with uh, in Supreme Court decisions that said content neutrality is, we can't tell you, you know, what color your sign is and we can't tell you what the name on your sign is or how it reads. And then the Reed case came down and ultimately says to us that when we say things, and this is where you walk into it in your residential sign regulations, you differentiate between what is a realty sign and what is a contractor sign. And that's the crux of the Reed decision. Is that basically the court said you're no longer being content neutral when you make those differentiations. In your commercial zones, you guys do a great job of you crafting the regulation without calling out those specific differences. Uh, so it's getting at that and trying to figure out, you know, I see an easy pathway to correct your residential portion uh, and so forth, but addressing those issues.
And we know that in your RFP, one of the big intents of this is to make sure that you are following the twenty twenty-four P O C D. So we, we quickly went through your P O C D to see what are the changes you're looking for. And we found uh, six or seven, you, you know, just right off the bat, there's more in there too. But um, like Don mentioned, the potential new zoning districts for Terracille and Wheaton Center. Dark Sky and Lighting Regulations, I've actually worked on a few of those regulations in different towns too, making sure you have the full cutoff light requirement, making sure that you're not bleeding light into the atmosphere, that kind of thing. Um, Adaptive Reuse Regulations, you know, in your, in your residential and, and commercial areas, that's something that we've worked on quite a bit. Um, I know, Don, you've worked on some in.
Yeah.
Enfield.
If I could just kind of mention here, much of my career is focused on smaller uh, locations, village-type places. So in the context, and that's on both the planning strategy and also zoning sense. So in the context of new zoning district for Terracille and Wheaton Field, extremely qualified and would be excited about that. The adaptive reuse stuff, I've done extensive work uh, in Connecticut and beyond Connecticut. Um, what I call, you know, weak market or distressed municipalities where you're dealing with a lot of older real estate and product that's challenging and needs to be reused. Affordable housing, uh, early in the two thousands, I spent four years running a housing organization, a nonprofit. Did neighborhood reinvestment work around housing. That kind of steered my career down a housing path and I have been involved in affordable housing and inclusionary requirements now for over twenty years. Uh, I don't know if it's good or bad, but I've worked on both sides of eight dash thirty G, representing both municipalities and also developers. So I understand it from both perspectives and concerns and challenges. And then also, you know, I've written a number of uh, inclusionary zoning regulations uh, to allow municipalities to move forward and actually achieve some uh, affordable housing.
At this point, I want to mention that you're hearing a lot sort of about our experience and I want to mention that we're the two that you're going to be working with. It, it's not, we're not a firm that we come in and then you talk to us and then we send other people your way. If you look at the budget and everything we provided, it's, it's Don and I who are doing the majority of this work, so.
Andal is in the background, who makes us look good with research.
And she's going to be talking to you a little bit about that in a second here. Um, but it's, in terms of the zoning aspects, we don't farm it out. And one thing that I feel the need to bring up nowadays is we don't use AI either. Um, a lot of firms have started using AI and it becomes very apparent and I've never been a fan. I don't think Don's a fan either, but um, anyway. So I just wanted to bring that up while we.
I, oh, I also have ex- experience with BV regulations. I've helped number of communities and uh, draft those. And also sustainability requirements. And that's another one of those, like, we need to have a discussion, you know, what exactly do you mean by sustainability? How, how's it being defined and how do we want it to play out within the context of the things? And I recognize your P O C D will provide some further direction there, but I would also want to hear from you, hear from staff on that.
So in the end, um, you know, we want regulations that is zoning map that assist in well-planned economic development in the places where you want it. You know, it's not something that we come in and say, well, you need economic development everywhere. Of course, you don't. You want it in certain areas, but in those areas where you want it, you want it to be a good path forward that makes sense to people and that's providing a direct avenue in a swift, simple and certain manner. Again, protect the community while allowing the commercial tax base to thrive, create a balance while making the regulations make sense and ensuring that current planning and zoning theory is prevalent throughout the document. Both Don and I spend a lot of time reading current articles and news stories and everything to make sure that we're always in line with the newest statutes and newest regulations and everything like that. Oh, yeah. Don, do you want to mention these?
Yeah, just the importance of using charts and tables. Your, once again, another aspect of your regs that's really good. You guys do a great job of this with charts and tables. There may be a couple of places where they could be expanded on. You know, the, the graphics, you know, the idea that picture's worth a thousand words, you can convey a lot more regulatory information, you know, through the graphic approach. Uh, it's also, you know, when Justin was talking about, you know, making simple regulations and so forth. I think at the end of the day, we should always view the resident, the homeowner, as the most common user. The most people showing up at the counter want to do is shed, a swimming pool, a small addition. And graphics uh, do a long way in conveying information, helping explain the process. So we want to make sure those are robust, which yours are, but see if we can make them more robust.
So do you want to talk about our public engagements?
Love how they put me on this line. Uh, Goman New York acknowledges that while we're experts in what we do and in zoning, your community is the expert in Simsbury and in its, and its goals, its intentions and its issues. So uh, for that reason, we keep engagement at the center of every project that we do. Uh, if we are selected to perform this contract, uh, the first thing that we will do is sit down with town staff and commissioners and develop a community engagement plan, um, which will just identify what types of engagement sessions we're holding and who we're holding them with. Currently, we envision two main, large and interactive workshop-type sessions with uh, that'll be open to the public. Uh, that being said, we'd like to make it very clear that we are very open to expanding beyond our proposed engagement scope. Uh, whether that be, we see often, we'll do uh, community surveys if we're maybe not getting the engagement that we're looking in a public session. Depending on how many people want to show up and talk about zoning at night, so.
Other than you guys, of course.
Have you noticed the size of our watch? She'll be there.
Um, and of course, we'll also be holding focus groups. We'll be doing intimate um, conversations with those who are most impacted by Simsbury's zoning regulations, whether it be business owners, developers, land use attorneys, and of course, that's. And of course, that's in addition to a number of conversations with you all. Um and then we'd also like to mention that we currently would envision developing these engagement sessions. Around your twenty twenty four P O C D recommendations. Of course, that's um subject to your input, but um maybe developing activities or discussions around. Um your potential new districts or um even just looking back on goals that had previously been set. Things like that.
Leave it there. Uh and so just to tie things up here, um you know, we proposed a fifteen month timeline for you guys. Um you know, in in month fifteen, we we note adoption at the end, starting from month thirteen to fifteen. We understand that there's always gonna be some flexibility, you're having public hearings, we'll help you through those, but if things come up, we'll work with you through that. So in other words, when day thirty or day thirty one of month fifteen hits, we're not walking away. Um you know, we're always interacting with town staff, you know, and making sure that we can really get the job done the way it wants to be done. Um it's it's no good to us if we leave you with a product that is not useful for the town. So we wanna make sure that during these fifteen months, we're working closely with you and really getting the the right level of engagement and discussion and um. And that's.
Yeah, I guess last comment, we're flexible. Uh at the end of the day, you know, if you contract with us, once we sign the contract, we're gonna deliver the product. We promise to deliver whatever it takes. Just a good example of that, I have a current community client who uh. We started, we kicked off P O C D and zoning regulations right when lockdown started on covid in twenty twenty. Uh that forced everything into the virtual world, it slowed us down. It meant we ended up deciding to put the zoning regs on the back burner, we moved forward with the P O C D. And then there was a political change in town and they just dragged their feet and didn't wanna get back to the zoning regs. And then there was another election that swung back in the other direction. And now it's twenty twenty five and I'm in the final stages of completing your zoning regs. Uh clients often ask, will you get it done on time? And my answer is always, yes, we will, unless it's you. Uh and in that case, it's them, not me, so. That's it, right?
That's it, the last thing I wanna mention though, because it's always interesting in the RFPs, uh sometimes when we're laying zoning regulations, they. They their zoning map is sacred, they don't wanna touch it all. In your case, you guys did mention that you don't want the zoning map reviewed and looked at. Um so Alyssa, her team of three people um is our G I S experts, and if you wanna speak a little bit to that.
Yeah, our team touches our G I S on pretty mu- I would say pretty much every single project, whether it be a market study or P O C D. Um because we find you can't really talk real estate without using a map. Um but it also comes back to what Don was saying about um keeping your regulations simple and certain. Um making them user-friendly and clear for residents, it's part of the charts and uh I guess tables approach.
Yes.
Graphic approach, I think you called it.
So questions?
Okay, let me ask the first question. I'm interested in, you know, you were talking about the, reminded me of it with the references to the map. Um I'm curious as to whether you feel like your experience and your intentions are to enable identification of areas. That appear to be ready, ripe, whatever, for development. It's not the whole town, it's gonna be in certain areas. Is that the case that your effort and your expertise coming into this process?
Yeah, absolutely.
You expect that you'd be able to identify.
That's.
Something, you wanna say something about how that works?
Yeah, definitely, that's a lot of what we do and and you know, Alyssa and her, you know, she's a data and research analyst analyst. And um that team does a lot of our research, but what Don and I do is we look at the town overall and say, okay, where are your major corridors? Where are the certain areas that, you know, maybe they've seen a lot of new residential development nearby, you know, multifamily development, that's gonna encourage some economic growth. Uh maybe there's there's different categories in town that are going to promote that in some way. But you know, a lot of our background is in real estate development, so that's one of our strong points, but Don has been doing this a long time, so.
Yeah, he's making me old now. We never do development ourselves, but helping developers and so forth. I wanna give a good example of uh Talon, Connecticut, back in like two thousand fifteen, reached out to myself and Mike Goldman. Wanted help with the site they had, that they wanted pad site out in front of a shopping center, that they wanted a Panera on it. And they were having no luck reaching out to Panera and they wanted us to help out. And we looked at the situation and told them, actually, don't pay us. We can't help you, cuz you just don't have the traffic counts to justify the Panera, that's why they're not talking to you. Skip ahead, they hired me to help with the economic development section of their P O C D. That expanded into the plant, the housing section that expand expanded into other sections. And through that, I got to work with the commission on kind of how to move towards more development, where they wanted it. And why they weren't getting it. That led to them, they retained us to update the commercial set of their zoning regulations. Couple of things happened over the course of all that work. One was they had a prohibition, I'm not saying this is what you have to do, it's just an example. Uh in addition to the low traffic counts on the Panera site, they had a prohibition on drive-through windows. During covid, Dunkin' Donuts came to them dying and wanting a drive-through window. Due to covid, they acquiesced and they granted it. It was through that conversation I was able to discuss with them kind of, if you want a Panera, then you're gonna need a drive-through window. Panera is not gonna consider that site without it. So through the regulation updates, we were able to craft a regulation that did allow drive-through windows in certain circumstances. Number two was a big part of the discussion through the plan process and then into the zoning regs was housing. And they are, they're more rural than you are, they're less developed than you are. And only two and a half percent of the total town is zoned for commercial, so they're predominantly residential. Historically, they had a giant fear of multifamily, they did not want it, did not like it, you couldn't even mention it. This commission was more open to the idea. I joke around, I did two years of therapy with them discussing housing. But then they were willing to amend the regulations to allow multifamily in their commercial zones. Based on this idea of a symbiotic relationship between commercial uses and residential uses. That basically, if you co-locate them, then those residents become kind of a captive audience. They approved two hundred and eighty units behind the Big Y Plaza, which had the pad site for where they wanted Panera. And I believe it was last year, they approved on that pad site, a Starbucks. Not Panera, the Starbucks. But the point is, you can connect the dots there from the planning to the regulatory. And our expertise in kind of how real estate's marketed and functioned. That we were able to coach them through how to better position that location that they could actually attract someone to it. I'm not saying every community needs a Panera or wants a Starbucks, but it's an example of how you do that, so we can definitely help.
Thank you, let me ask my colleagues for other questions.
Sure.
I wanna hear Tony, if you're gonna ask the same question.
No.
Oh, okay. So I wanna steal Tony's question, um. Will you guys stay on budget and will you stay on your deadline?
Yeah, uh once we sign the contract with you, we feel that is the budget. And that was kind of my comment about, we will do whatever it takes to wrap up the project. Uh and we will do it on time, less pandemics and less things in your control now that ours like political issues and so forth and so on. So we will stay on time, we will stay on budget, we won't come back and say to you, well, we're eighty five percent complete, but we blew through our hourly's and we need more money. That would, I've never done it, I've never have.
Do you have other uh proposals that are longer, going longer than yours, but you think you can do the same scope of work and?
Yeah, cuz you guys, I mean, I don't know what others think about your regs, but as I said, you guys have a well-organized. Set of regulations, I know you may not feel that internally, but go out there and look at some.
Well, some of us were here when they were written, so some of us might feel pretty strong about it.
Yeah, but go out and look at other regulations and there's a lot of frightening stuff. I worked for a town that had five thousand people, I opened up the regs and the P D F says to me at the top three hundred and ninety-five pages. I'm like, like, shoot me now. Uh you guys, I think your P D F says a hundred and twenty-five, I think your table of contents uh comes in at like eighty-nine or something. You guys have a really reasonable set of regulations with great tables and so forth. So I don't have, we don't have a ton of work to do to make your regulations manageable, they're manageable. What we need to do is get down to work with you guys, with staff, and figure out what needs to improve in your regulations and work through that. So I think the shorter timeline works, if you wanna add.
Yeah, one one additional thought with that. Um prior to my work with Goaney New York, I was a municipal planner for ten years uh in different towns throughout Connecticut. And what I've noticed is the longer these projects go on, the more thrust you lose. So what happens is you do, making up time is, let's say we came up with a twenty-four month timeline, now it's two years. People lose the energy, you know, people, oh god, we're talking about this again tonight? No, we really like to drive it and make sure that it's following that fifteen month, because that way everybody stays in tune, you're. We kind of observe you're more awake, you know, it's uh so.
And you can see the end.
Yes, so exactly.
Yeah, that's great, if you can do it. Thank you, Mister Chair.
So uh Justin and Don, you said you would be co-project manager, is that correct?
So I would be the main point of contact, but Don is our subject matter expert, he's, I think, in the budget, he's almost as many hours as me, I think slightly less. But yes, we're both, we're both always uh answering to you guys.
So will you please describe uh the model of how you would be working with the commissioners?
Sure, so we would be working with you guys through the town in the sense that any any direct inquiries can always come to me, they can always go to Don too, Don's great about responding. Um but in general, it'd be directed through me. So I would work with George to get onto your agendas, work to set up the meetings, work to set up the public engagement. Um I guess one question I have for you guys too is, is it gonna be this commission, is it gonna be a steering committee, have you given any thought to that or? Not quite any thought to that yet.
Yes, we have.
Great.
The inclination is that it would be this committee, they wanna be designing.
Good. No, that's 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 workable, we've seen towns do it different ways.
You didn't have a townwide election on that point, you just.
But so yeah, we'd be working with you the whole the whole process. Um and like I said, both of us are very responsive, um you know, call, any phone calls, any emails, we're not, we're not turning them away. We regularly answer, maybe we shouldn't, but we regularly answer emails on weekends and.
Right.
But you know, so.
Just a little bit on the nitty-gritty, usually the work sessions are like, let's identify, we'll work with staff, what's going on the agenda. Let's identify the topic of the night, what are the sections we're looking at, what's the discussion framed around? We may provide you with material in advance or direct you kind of uh to be prepared. And then the work sessions are very casual, kind of like this, so let's take on that sign issue. Like, as I said, you guys have a really short, efficient sign reg. I once did work in a community, they had thirty-nine pages of sign regulations. Statute says height, size, location, illumination, how one sentence results in thirty-nine pages, I don't know, but you guys have an efficient reg. But as I said, you know, your residential walks into the trap of content neutrality. So tonight, we're gonna do sign regulations and we're gonna hash that out, we're gonna discuss it, we're gonna figure out ways. And then we're gonna get draft language back to you for the correction. And then next meeting, maybe, you know, Weetog and Terrafill and what to do there. In that case, we'd probably put a framework for a draft regulation before you, before we meet with you and then walk through it. So it would be, let's go through these issues, kind of one by one, and work through them and let us get drafts back to you.
Thanks, I have one more, or go ahead, Shannon, you need to do one before.
Um thank you. On uh the slide um where you are discussing your approach, there's one point that says, protect the community while allowing the commercial tax base to thrive. Um I wanna understand what you mean by the word protect? And if you can give us an example of how you would do that, cuz that's kind of like.
Yeah, so.
The holy grail.
I guess for me, it's risk appetite, you know, I go through your regs, I looked at your, and I I know a lot about Simsbury. I've done some projects here, I follow the news, you know, I could probably regurgitate your past thirty years of land use controversy to you. Uh but for me, it's kind of like, it's risk appetite. So you know, one thing I saw in your regs, you guys, less than twenty thousand square feet for retail. Can come through the as-of-rate process and over twenty thousand then kicks in uh conditional use process, right? Why twenty thousand, what's that number, you know, how'd that come into being? Are you comfortable with that, do you want something different? And that's me kind of pushing you, you know, me asking you those questions, why, where'd it come from? Half the times on those questions, it was ten commissions ago that came up with the number and no one even knows why it's there. And then let's have a discussion, and I really don't have a good one for that twenty thousand tonight. But just kind of, there have been in points and times where I've seen more rural communities be like four thousand or five thousand. It's like, oh, you can't even get a decent restaurant at five thousand, right? So why that threshold and how does that work in the marketplace? So how can we let your regs breathe a bit to allow investment to flow in the commercial realm? But at the same time, not push beyond what you're comfortable with. Uh and that twenty thousand says a lot to me, you know, you guys don't want big box retail. You guys actually don't want small box national chain retail out there at twenty thousand. Uh so how can we do that? That that's what the protection is talking about.
So that that's protect the community is, okay.
Yeah. Not pushing you but beyond your comfort level, but it takes us to figure out what that comfort level is and where we go. And that's why, like I said, I'll push you in work sessions, you guys get to push back and I know you will. And that's how we decide, like, okay, it's twenty thousand, or maybe we find out it's actually fifteen, I don't know, I'm not recommending that. Uh but I can apply that to kind of any regulatory, you know. At the end of the day, you want investment to be able to flow here, you want, you know, you want your regulations to be swift, simple and certain. So that people can get stuff done, but you don't wanna give away everything and become something you're not, that you don't wanna be.
Probably about five more minutes. Do you wanna?
Kay had a question.
Um I just wanted to hear briefly, and I apologize if you covered this already, there was a lot of information here. Um just kind of like what the end product that you're kind of producing in terms of like the regulations and then how it works and how it's handed over to the town and like what we have.
Oh, like a formatting type thing, okay, yeah, so when we do regulations, we do them in a, you know, it's pretty standard Microsoft Word format. But what we end up doing is making sure that everything in your table of contents, all the links inside, it all connects to each other. Most people are not reading your regulations in a book anymore, um I sometimes like to, but that's me. But when you're looking through it online and it says, you know, refer to section four point two. It's nice to be able to have that link to just click, so you're not scrolling through every time. Um so it, does that answer?
Yeah, I think it does, yeah, yeah, thank you.
And is there a mechanism for updating them when laws change or we want to change?
Absolutely, so when we're finished, you'll get it in both Word format and P D F. So if two years down the road, you say, you know what, this one needs to be tweaked a little bit, George can go in and just, it's edit in the Word format and it all lines up still, so.
So that it corrects all the pages that tie together.
Exactly, right, exactly, it all it all gets linked to each other, so that way it keeps it consistent over time.
And all all the headings, all the subheadings are all linked back to the table of contents. So if you insert a new section to the whole table of contents and the whole document will renumber and readjust. So we don't have to do those old school kind of this section left blank for.
Yes, copy and paste.
Yeah, right. And and as a side note, Word formatting is the bane of my existence, because what happened, we, you know, when you copy and paste something? And everything else messes up, so you won't get that. We will make sure that it's all clear and concise, because otherwise it would drive me crazy, so.
Okay, so, well, I'm impressed they've already reviewed our P O C D and regs, so you could come here with suggestions already.
Not full-fledged, right, but but enough to be somewhat knowledgeable, you know, I, we need to know what we're talking about.
Yeah. As Donald said, they have done work here in Simsbury, um I'm, my background is real estate. And before this meeting, I made some inquiries and you have a very good reputation for your work in Simsbury, so thank you.
That's good, thank you.
I was at that Southington meeting.
Oh, that's where you live from though.
That's right, she lived for me.
We're everywhere.
That's why you asked if I was Heidi.
Yeah, because there was a Heidi there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
We're all sitting here going, we know this woman.
Why is she here?
While we're there, in terms of time, did you wanna say anything else? As long as you're here.
I I I don't think I have anything, just thank you very much for your time, we appreciate your consideration. Any questions that come up, please feel free to let us know, we're happy to help. Um, Don, anything else for you?
No, that's it, we appreciate the time and uh hopefully we'll be working with you and look forward to it if we have the chance, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, George.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, I.
Channing. Nope, it's gonna top the hand up. I love it.
See?
Look. It's prepared.
Okay, what did you say? I I I put your presentation on my computer, I just have to find it now. See, we've been we've been kind of uh cash, kind of talking from there.
Thank you.
Cash, cash. You never heard the expression cash, for casual.
No.
Now we know you mean it.
All right, we'll come back to that, I don't. So yeah, it's just right.
So the thing is that you can sit there and talk from there, if you're comfortable with it. If you wanna get up and walk around, sound system will pick up your voice from recording. Whenever you're comfortable.
We'll keep it cash.
We're here in forty-five minutes. And that would allow something like twenty-five minutes for your presentation uninterrupted. Although some of us signed harder.
Feel free to do so.
And then my colleagues and I will hold questions until the last fifteen minutes and then we'll see what else we have to say.
Sounds good.
So, let's go.
Bruce, thank you.
Yeah, we're we're on. Um so, you know, certainly you have our proposal, um and.
And your names?
Oh, I'm getting there. Yep, you have our proposal, so um we just kind of wanted to highlight some things about us, our approach uh and give you, I think, a little bit more of some background of our experience as well. Um so kind of starting upfront, you know, uh given sort of our our introductions here, I am Molly Gaudio, so I would be the project manager um for this effort. And uh you know, I've kind of consistent background uh with planning through the public and private sector. Um so I've worked as planning staff in uh ver- in a city planning office. Um I've also served on the city planning commission uh in the city I formerly lived in and currently do in in the village that I live in. So uh I think so one of the things to sort of bring here is perspective from multiple sides um of the the table.
Thank you, Molly. Uh my name is John Steinmetz, I'm a planning principal for this project. Um over thirty years' experience, most of which as a consultant, but similar to Molly. Um also I have experience working for city planning and city zoning office. I was uh on the my town conservation board and chair of my village planning board once upon a time. Um you know, so I kind of, we're kind of government geeks, you know, we just kind of like.
Love them.
Yes, yes, we're amongst friends. You know, so between my consulting experience and my volunteer experience, I think some of the things will hopefully be applicable uh to this project and we can talk about that a little bit later.
Hi, my name is Jacob Robinson, um I'm a planner. Um I've been involved in all the zoning related work that was done so far in Connecticut and also work uh with um work on some projects for zoning in New Jersey also with the company, so. Take a take a couple different, couple different hats on states for zoning, so.
Thanks. And like Molly said, you've got this information in the proposal, but just to hit the high points, you know, we've got, I've done personally three hundred plus code related reviews, so site plan reviews as as staff, as a consultant. Uh Molly and I will often get tapped by attorneys and developers and communities to say, how would you help with this? How could we improve this? So that's that's something we uh do a fair amount throughout our career. We've done fifty-plus code assessments, we've got forty-plus partial or complete code amendments. So a partial amendment might be a downtown form-based code, it might be a sign code for a community, or it might be a complete overhaul and revision. Um you know, so we're all, there's not any given time where we're not working on two to seven codes, uh depending on what happens. Um you know, we're good at it, we've won awards, we're proud of that. We're more proud of the impact our work does on communities that we help and partner with. Um and we can talk about that a little bit later. And whether it's planning, zoning, downtown revitalization, grant writing, uh virtually everything we do involves some public engagement component, uh some more than others, so with with a zoning update, you want a lot of it to make sure it's done well and we can talk about that in a little bit. And we've got a deep bench, uh you know, so if we need more technical staff, whether it's uh green infrastructure, if you're in landscape architecture and designers, who some of which are, the pictures are on their screen up there, or if it's something might, maybe it's a little more technical, uh we've got a lot of planners in-house and we've got technical expertise in-house that can kind of answer any questions we may have. Um especially the architects are kind of handy sometimes. When it talks about modern construction, what can you do for design with modern construction with first floor heights and things like that.
Um one of the other things just wanna highlight, um you know, we do have a level of national expertise um in working through uh you know, various presentations, best practices. Um the uh twenty twenty-three, I presented at the National APA Planning Conference on uh it was a law session, kind of speaking to the balance between legal risk aversion and actually implementing what we, you know, see to be best practice for land use today with elements of place-making and other components that traditional zoning code approaches. Uh you know, and and certainly some of the older guard of municipal attorneys we've worked through feel a little bit less comfortable with. So we've been able to kind of work through some ideas and some balance there uh in sort of testing some of those elements uh for best practice. And John also uh co-author of a uh, oh, I'll let you speak to that.
A few articles, this is one I think is the most relevant, zoning best practice. You know, once once you update a code, or if your code's really old, but usually this is more geared towards a newer code, how do you monitor it? How do you monitor success of a new code? When do you do it? How might you do it? So that was the topic of that particular um zoning practice issue.
And uh you know, as John was saying, sort of government geeks policy and and zoning geek here, um you know, we really dive into uh a lot of the context of state law in the commu- uh states that we work in, Pennsylvania, New York, Connecticut. Um I previously, I have my master's from Ohio State in planning. The I worked for the city of Westerville in Ohio, so also have sort of an understanding of the uh commonalities between state laws that relates to planning and zoning, um the origin of that, as well as the sort of the more nuanced elements um that deal with your long-range planning, planted conservation development, as well as zoning as a tool. Uh and I'll let Jacob speak a little bit to our broader Connecticut experience.
Yeah, so we have um, we have a broad depth of things that we've worked on in Connecticut with various communities. Um right now, uh Molly and I are working on um the uh zoning analysis and master plan for West Haven. A big part of that, which Molly's gonna jump into in the next couple of slides, is um looking at their downtown zoning district and kind of at the same time that we're visioning a future for development in downtown, how do we uh they've they've, a lot of different people in that community give a sense of us, we really need a dynamic downtown district and we're working with them to revitalize that uh that zoning district. Um and uh in Hartford, Newington, New Haven, uh we've worked with them during plans to um identify, during redevelopment plans to identify, these are the sorts of reuses of sites that you want to see in the future. And how do we rezone uh those sites for, to allow for uh the visioned redevelopment in those sites? And also, and um for the MetroCOP region, we are kind of doing a typology of uh different typologies within the region based on zoning districts and how we can um uh improve design standards for those uh zoning districts and on the regional level to accomplish what the region's goals are. So let Molly jump into West Haven.
Uh so you know, a little uh element and something that, you know, we feel is very important um with the start of really any zoning code update process um is a a deep dive assessment uh of the code itself, whether it's for a master plan like this or a a broader, uh more comprehensive zoning code update. Uh just to give you a little bit of of context here, first, the types of things that we've been looking into is, you know, within that downtown area, they do have um, you know, a village uh overlay district, one of those uh that was provided for by the Connecticut state statutes, um and how that's working and not working for them. Uh and that's something that we've sort of been working through and some of the, you know, ideas and concepts behind it, as well as how that balances with community character, the vision for the area, how the existing district may or may not be supportive of that vision, you know, within that corridor. And there's quite a bit of concerns when you look at in terms of commercial encroachment. So you know, that's sort of the the broader kind of boundary uh context. We also look at sort of the details, the the finer elements associated with the districts. I've yet to get into a zoning code that does not have sort of some uh unnecessarily created, maybe unintentionally created non-conformities. You know, you see uh that a lot in terms of setback requirements, minimum lot size requirements uh and your lot coverage requirements. Um for example, with uh West Haven here in these two graphics, um they currently have a thirty percent maximum building coverage requirement in their downtown. You can see in that top left image there, there's quite a few parcels that are the more traditional character they're looking to preserve that are at almost a hundred percent lot coverage. God, you know, forbid one of those burned down, they would not be able to replace it in that that same way. Uh the same for the residential parcels in the area. Um you know, there are many, actually ninety-eight percent of them do not actually conform to the lot with uh area requirements and some of them not with the uh use requirements either. And they're looking to promote more of that mixed density residential. Uh so you know, looking at ways and recommendations that we can accommodate that. So it's been a big part of uh more, you know, that concentrated component when it comes to the master plan itself. Um when we look, dive into any zoning code update, we really have sort of a a, you know, work with you, not for you, uh philosophy. We want to make sure that we are presenting and and there's an understanding of the why behind the types of tools and things that we're talking about. Um you know, and we're kind of giving the context to what's being provided. Um you know, trying to make sure as well that we are setting realistic expectations. Um that goes, it's a big component with the public that I'll I'll touch on in a couple of slides. Um but another element, and I think something again, that's, you know, an unintended uh, you know, result of piecemeal amendments and things that have happened over time is that we've started to put some red tape maybe in front of things that you would like to see, uh making it a little bit, you know, difficult for that desirable investment. Um and so we like to come at it in ways that we can certainly remove those non-conformities, provide a little more simplicity uh where we can in terms of the review processes themselves. Some, you know, more um a sense of uh understanding for applicants and users of the code, make that a little bit easier. And just as an example here in in the image, um this is a project, pretty large development project, infill project uh that was approved in just over thirty days. Um and the thirty days component of that or component was really the environmental review, the the minimum uh time for environmental review. So you know, there's ways to do that and to support these projects that you're looking for and and try to encourage that um as well, you know, instead of just thinking about zoning as the what you don't do, but also how can you kind of greenlight the stuff that you are looking to do and and achieve. Uh certainly, as always, that consistency with the planted conservation development. Uh this is, you know, going back to the state enabling acts for planning and zoning in nineteen twenty-eight, nineteen twenty-six. They work hand in hand, um and you see that in in all all almost all state uh regulations today. So you know, working through this process, being able to uh identify and and make those findings, um part of the assessment is for us to identify ways that maybe they don't align right now, so that when we get to the end of the process, and you recently uh updated your uh P O C D, making sure that we have uh the ability to say, here's how we're supporting that, the recommendations of that plan. I certainly think there's, you know, many opportunities for that. Um the West Simsbury uh area, the Western Center, for example, currently not really zoned for what your planted conservation development is uh looking for in terms of the place-making element, kind of providing more of a uh contact, you know, that walkable context um in the area with your B two and B three districts. Little bit more of the larger setback issues, um as well as it's, you know, a little inconsistent currently in in how that area's been developed. So what can the zoning code do uh to really support the vision for some of those smaller areas as well as kind of the broader uh use of land throughout the the town? Um you know, our our core components here, as as I mentioned, we certainly want to use your existing plans and studies uh to help inform the regulations themselves, what changes may be necessary, what things you might want to preserve and keep uh to keep your code kind of working for you where it has been working for you. We certainly want to uh, you know, develop those strong partnerships with with staff, with if there's a a steering committee that's leading this process or working directly with you, um you know, as as the the commission. We wanna make sure we have that strong relationship, that understanding, so that we can really work through uh the issues and the opportunities in in a way that um, you know, is kind of fostering in the in the frank discussions. Uh our knowledge of land use best practice, our understanding of the various tools that are available is, you know, something we're we're very proud to be able to bring to the table uh in in providing alternatives. You know, there's more than one way to achieve the things that you may uh want to achieve through the zoning code. Um and lastly, you know, leveraging that uh public input and and support component. Um each of those elements kind of build in as uh, you know, component of of what we look at in the whole as as the best practice itself. You know, starting with your existing plans and moving through how we are providing for ease of administration of a code. Uh you know, the same code does not work for communities with a staff of one versus a staff of ten, you know, and and some of the more sophisticated uh, you know, review boards and review procedures. So we wanna make sure that we are uh crafting a code that is usable for you at at the end of the process. We wanna make sure we're building in and we're capturing the community character elements and design. There's a lot of recommendations and components associated with that uh in your P O C D. So you know, what could, what does that look like in the code in terms of guidelines and and requirements and standards? Being investment friendly, responding to market trends and changes, housing market has certainly shifted quite a bit. How is the code accommodating that? Uh you know, within the town and and the various densities and mixes that that you're looking for, capturing your existing development patterns, um land use best practice, sustainability, green uh components to codes, green infrastructure, you you know, looking at that, we've worked a lot of communities and using those as incentives um in in development, really. And then last but not least, certainly the uh case law support and and uh being consistent with uh state law itself to ensure again that, you know, we always say we can't prevent uh illegal challenges, but we can certainly help you uh set yourselves up for a a stronger um defense and and support of what you have uh put forth in the code. Uh and truly that balance of, you know, flexibility and certainty for yourselves, for applicants, for users of the code. Uh the code assessment component, as I mentioned, you just wanna give a couple examples of, you know, our our approach and what you can expect from that. Um as we go through, one of the things we do is start to identify the um areas in the code that uh where updates may be needed most. As I mentioned, identifying non-conformities, example here from another community we've worked with, you know, identifying based on your current lot requirements, here's all the properties that are are non-conforming, right? Uh identifying some little things, where can your definitions be cleaned up, where the where might they be conflicting? In today's day and age, do we really, you know, care between whether the office is business or professional? You know, we can kind of uh work through that, I think, as long as it's functioning in terms of scale and intensity of use in the same way. Maybe we can kind of simplify that uh as part of the process. So this really helps us kind of understand the areas of focus and drill down uh where those updates are needed most. We also base that off of your input, public input, stakeholder input, staff. I'm sure there's uh certain certainly people uh within Town Hall here that are have a laundry list of things to look at and to highlight, yourselves probably as well. Uh so making sure we we build that into the overall picture. Um right now, your code is laid out really well uh in terms of the structure of topics and the organization of topics. Um but I think there's a lot of ways that that can be cleaned up. Um as part of this process, we will outline the various sections looking at, right, your your core district and use regulations, your design and development regulations. And at the end of the assessment, you'll will have a total proposed outline. It may not. It may not be a hundred percent where we land as we go through, but it's a way for us to identify. Um oh good, this works, a way for us to identify, you know, here's our proposed sort of structure, how we're categorizing things by section. Uh underneath that is everything that's existing in your code, so you can understand where that may live. And uh if within that, you know, the uh high level ideas of what we anticipate revising, maybe removing. Uh maybe adding to the the process and maybe just flagging things for questions as we work through, so this really helps us a strong roadmap. Uh for the process, we can understand when we may be uh talking about certain elements within the code, because certainly it's a very large undertaking. Um and you're not able to talk really about it all in one sort of sitting. I think there's some room for improvement in the navigation of of your current code. Um you know, cleaning things up so that we have a a very easy, ready. Uh way to refer to the regulations, I know there's some sort of use of of tables, other things in there, certainly graphic rep- representations of. Encourage, discourage types of things. Um this is just an example of one code we've done where within their commercial districts, they had three, we laid them out in terms of their purpose statements on one page. Uh across two pages here is the district useless and you'll see each column was a separate district, so across each district you can see where. Right, each thing is permitted, we've simplified then the uh lot and the yard requirements and then your bulk requirements across uh these pages, so. Several of these things, I know there's some that is in the code now, but I think a lot of that could be certainly simplified and I think there's a way it can be presented that. Uh gives some context to other uh components. Um we also want to make sure we're incorporating graphics uh where we can, we all know those paragraphs of very complicated language. Um and you know, what what does that mean at the end of the day, um you know, how are you interpreting uh what those design standards are with respect to. Uh you know, building design and and facades and, you know, lighting expectations, landscaping, screening, all of those components. And also bringing the same concept to review procedures. Um this has been very helpful, one certainly to just give a simplified version of the expectation of process. But it also is a way for us to map the process and talk through what it is now and where things may be streamlined. Um you know, being able to visualize that and and work through that. Uh as part of our proposal, we have identified um two in sort of informal public meetings, a kickoff meeting and more of an open house or or workshop style. Uh meeting at the beginning and then towards the end of the code uh re- revision process. Um two rounds of stakeholder interviews at the start, get that feedback, at the end, here's where we landed on some draft regulations, let's get your feedback on that. You know, did we miss the mark, do you have further sort of uh recommendations, comments? And pairing that again with um some uh online engagement as well or and and surveys. Um so that, you know, there's more than just that one time event um in terms of uh outreach to the public. And uh developing a project website, uh that is a one stop shop for information, documents, updates, meetings, scheduling. Uh you know, all of those elements in one place, um and that can be something that is, you know, updated, maintained throughout the process. And then uh two public hearings to assist with the adoption process at the end. Really was something we also want to highlight as our approach to the engagement is um different than it would be from a planning process. Uh certainly, the the plans themselves, they create a lot of excitement, they tend to be a little more high level, they're very vision based, which is which is great. Um but there's, one, it's not quite as exciting as zoning for for the general public itself.
We don't understand.
Certainly don't, uh but the element of of zoning is there's there's a limitation, right, to the parameters of things that you can and cannot craft within a code. The types of issues and opportunities that the community may have highlighted as part of the planning process. Does not present itself the same way in the code, so we find that pre- providing that context upfront, really making sure. We are focusing on how those uh tools and and uh land use regulations that have been put in there and revised. How they support the policies um and and components, so just an example here, we we utilize for one community. Um you know, as as part of their uh plan, they identified a northern gateway area, the plan talked about the transit zone, the typologies, some place making elements. And we paired with that the village gateway business district that wholly looked at the context of how the district itself is supporting. Uh what's in the plan, so you know, that's one way to kind of bring that to the table. Um we also bring a lot of different approaches, um we can talk about ways to adapt the meetings, the workshops, the surveys. Uh they can be online, we've we've done online mapping for for zoning, uh you know, we've done in person type things, we've done. Online surveys, popups, all all of those components and we also have an a acc- uh accessibility component with translation services. Um that's so that, you know, if there are is a need for uh the survey in, you know, multiple languages, we can kind of work through that. Um and you know, just another example here of how we can tailor that outreach to zoning, um you may be familiar with visual community preference survey. Uh as part of the zoning process, we do like to ask, right, uh you know, what what do you envision various densities of residential development looking like? How, you know, giving these examples, how appropriate might it be for Simsbury or or inappropriate, commercial, same thing. Uh you know, streetscape, signs, and we don't just stop there, um we also like to ask. How strong is your preference, because there's a difference, some people might like this type of building, but they may not feel the need to regulate that. To to uh zone out the stuff they don't like and require the stuff they do like. Uh so that's a way that we can kind of get a little bit more of that context through the process. Um the last thing sort of I'd like to note here, um we do have a a strong relationship with General Code. Um we have worked with them to understand the and and kind of advocate for. The need to engage uh publishers as as part of the process as opposed to just handing them the product at the end. I know currently your code is not on Ecode, but you do have your broader uh code elements on Ecode. There are many tools that um it Ecode has now, it is not the Ecode of the past. Uh that would make it uh uh able to pull the zoning into that and add that to uh the eh more dynamic uh component of online hosting, so. There's a way to bring in those graphics to utilize, it's a great tool, if you're ever feeling, um you know, wanting to. Click around and sort of see various ways that this works, um I think the in the digital version of our proposal, there was a link to some map links. It's a a really awesome interactive tool for people to understand uh and navigate the code itself. So the way that we draft ours inward, we certainly provide you with that file and that information. Um but the way that we draft that actually utilizes styles and things that makes it easier for General Code to get it on their online hosting. So our shameless infomercial, I think we kind of hit a lot of these points already, um you know, we are passionate about this, uh we we have a lot of range of experience. From multiple perspectives and and drafting codes at at various scales, small sections, it's, you know, one set of regulation signs, one district. Whole whole code updates, um you know, we kind of work through a lot um in terms of the public engagement component. And how we can make sure that that's reflecting and and getting the information we need to support the process. Um a lot of sort of Connecticut A P A involvement, uh to really get a sense of where things stand there. Uh at the state level in terms of best practice and uh last but not least, we certainly want to offer a a flexible scope and budget. Um you know, if there's things we have proposed that don't make sense, we're happy to to take the lip out, if there's additional things we want to kind of work through and take a look at, we can certainly do that as well.
Yeah, and even if collectively we determine a scope and a budget and then something happens midstream. Uh public engagement meeting may have fell flat or maybe we want to pivot, uh we're very, we're very open to doing that, that happens all the time on projects. So that's some something that we can uh share with you as well.
So questions, you're right on time.
Uh we are out of the Rochester, New York office, yep.
Okay.
Jacob's out of.
Jacob?
I'm out of Madison.
Oh, really? How about, uh I saw something on the internet about uh Wilcox Street, Simsbury, this person over there named Matt Whitmer.
It was an address linked to your company name.
Because they bought V zero, that was the.
Talk us, talk about that phase zero relationship, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
So uh they became part of college engineering and design two years ago, something like that. Um so still integrating, I just was talking with a one uh a phase zero guy up on another project last week quite extensively, so. Um in Rochester, we understand phase zero's got a lot of talented people, um so the integration's getting coming along quite nicely. Uh so I haven't had a chance to work with any phase zero people directly, but I think the opportunity will present itself soon.
They are architectural anyway, so it's like not exactly the same.
Yeah, little different.
I work out of their office sometimes, it's not that far.
It's a nice little building.
Oh, it's great, I love that building.
Okay. First question, Shannon, I saw your hand go up.
Um thank you, um you you might have answered this, but I just wanted to kind of draw it out a little bit more. You spoke a lot about um encouraging public participation and getting residents to stay involved and I just wondered if you could give us some. Examples that you think might be appropriate for Simsbury.
Yeah, uh so certainly, I think uh utilizing the website, it becomes a a key component, but. Um making sure that there's some consistent communication of the project and the project process throughout. Um we like to adapt, uh you know, we're very flexible with a lot of our outreach uh components, so. You know, we may plan for that public kickoff meeting to be an in person event. Earlier in the day, we might hold a virtual version of that for people who can't attend, record that, that becomes available. Um we like to structure a lot of the engagement so that it is not so policy technical focused that people just sort of glaze over. Um you know, again, really tying that to what it means um for them and for the potential change uh within the community over time. Um I think what's something that's very important to us is to talk with you about what channels have worked for you to reach. Different uh community members, so in some communities, you know, it's been something where they have a a robust. You know, listserv and and a set of emails to to reach out, there's been, you know, um. Uh community uh elected officials that put out a newsletter that gives sort of highlights that we work with them to kind of give a little bit of context to. Um to to gives the updates of where things are and hey, this meeting's coming up or hey, this this draft uh element is is out, take a look. You know, submit questions on the website, things like that. Um so you know, I think it would be kind of a pair of using what we know has kind of worked from a content standpoint. Um with what you know, your sort of outreach channels to be successful.
And when you speak of the website, you're speaking of the website that would be created specifically for this.
Yes, yeah, we can create an independent uh website for this, if you would prefer, we have also done it where we have provided material. To the community so that they can update it, some just feel weird about directing people to another website, we understand that, but we are. Uh happy to have the independent website.
Yeah, and we um we we all with most of our projects, we create our own uh website because we can post things very quickly on it. And we make sure that, you know, every public event is on the website. And what we do at our public events is we love to have little postcards with Q R codes that people can easily, it has the website and the survey on it. So people can take it home, easily scan it, we've gotten really great feedback um from those ways of reaching out and recently in Newington. Um we had about six hundred responses to a survey that we did, which was surprised us even, so.
And that and that was helpful feedback mostly?
Yeah.
Six hundred people in Newington gave you a bunch of really helpful, useful, actionable feedback on a online survey is what you're talking about.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, sure.
We can. We used an independent um standalone website and storybook for the tariff fill.
Right.
The input planning process last year.
I remember, that's kind of what I had in my brain.
Yeah, one thing we're very good at too is work, you know, working side by side with the community for when issues come up, you know, so hey, the rumor mill says. You guys are going to zone for this, which is not the case at all, or we're not even there yet, we're eight months away from that part of the process, wherever the case may be. So, you know, we're very good working with leadership to say, you know, is there a newsletter coming out that we can address this, you know, we can put something on the web from. From like officials from us, so that rumor mill uh phenomenon is fairly common when it comes to zoning. So, shocker, shocker, I know, um but that's something will work extensively with you and and by your side to make sure that the rumors are. Uh responded to as quickly as possible.
Now, you mentioned that you done worked for the town of West Haven, do you, have you worked with any other towns in Connecticut on a similar project? That is a review and revision of zoning regulations?
The assessment component um for and and recommend identifying sort of the issues, opportunities and recommendations. Um has been a part of a lot of the Connecticut sort of master planning efforts that we've done. Um we have not done a a comprehensive uh zoning code update in Connecticut. Um that being said, the process itself, pretty similar, um a lot of the tools, right, uh through across the states that we work in. Uh you know, well tested in in all state contexts, um and you know, as I mentioned, we just sort of, you know, really have a a strong understanding of. The actual regulatory framework, um you know, that supports good planning, honestly.
So, who are the people that we've been working with, the three of you?
Yes.
So you would be coming down from Rochester, dedicate a day or whatever.
Yes, yeah.
But you would do a lot of it remotely, because it's analyzing.
Mm-hmm.
And writing and.
Yes, yep.
You wouldn't need to come that often.
Yeah, I think.
Have digital or online communication.
Yes, yeah, I think in our proposal, we said we would have um three virtual uh meetings, you know, with the rest of those, I think there were. I believe eight meetings, sort of committee or commission, whichever, you know, way way we're working. Uh meetings, so the others we would be here in person, unless you said it's not necessary and, you know, virtual is fine, that that works. We like to time those with deliverables that facilitate themselves for a better in person conversation. Um you know, the the assessment, it tends to be a lot of fact finding, review of that information. That's a pretty, pretty good virtual meeting, a lot of it's more of the conversation questions and, uh you know, walking through some of the alternatives, recommendations. Going through districts, looking at the map, understanding a lot of those implications, that's that's an in person conversation for us, so. Yeah, we'll work with you to kind of balance um, you know, when we're here and and when it makes sense to be virtual.
I I think you might have commented on this, but just remind me, but you're providing, at the end of the day, a code that is. Uh will withstand legal challenge theoretically.
Well supported, for, yes, yes, we can certainly ensure that there's that strength between.
Now, how do you, how do you do that, I missed that part, um.
Yeah.
You were operating in multiple states.
Mm-hmm.
And uh I I it had occurred to me before as we talked to others who practice in different states, how different is the process from state to state?
Yeah.
And uh because you're a complainant in Pennsylvania, uh New York and Connecticut are different.
Yes.
Do you have a database or attorneys in different locations, how does that work?
Yeah, so um the actual process itself is is very similar, right, I we're we're assessing the code, working through the code, we're drafting with you the various sections. The main thing that's different at the end is the number of public hearings that are required, the bodies that are, you're required, you know, to to look at the code and and to bless it. Uh you know, as it goes through the process, um that's kind of the biggest uh difference between that. We do have land use attorneys um that we work with and, you know, those kind of connections uh a- across sort of the the states. Um but the main thing for us really is that your uh solicitor is comfortable with what's in the code, right? That's that's, it's ultimately going to be defended, uh you know, uh from the the town's perspective, so that's the thing that we want to make sure is important and. Depending on, you know, again, how the process unfolds, you know, we like to have that person at the table sort of throughout. To understand and and give us some feedback, you know, uh on the various sections and things we might be proposing, but. You know, again, the process is is very similar uh across all.
You know, I think I would just just add to that, for for any firm that you that you that you select to do this. There's certainly a role for Mr. De Cressenzo in the town attorney's office as part of reviewing and vetting and interaction.
Yeah, and part of it's just knowing where to look for the things that might be state specific. Uh you know, it just, oh like definitions, i- if you look at home occupation definitions, are we like ours? But if you look at definitions of certain land uses, there's some nuances here or there, Pennsylvania does some interesting things with it, but generally speaking, a a home occupation definition. But generally speaking, a a home occupation definition in New York, Connecticut, um Pennsylvania is ours, I think ours is fantastic, but they're all gonna be very similar. So I don't think, you know, you and just doing this for decades on and you start to say, oh, let's check what the state says about this.
Yeah.
But in terms of the land use map, the districts, what the permitted uses uh can or can't be, a lot of that stuff is a similar approach, different answer from community to community to community, but similar approach from state to state to state.
And and the state identified and sort of the the state uh supported tools also vary. Um you know, New York is sort of light on on the direct uh direction of various district structures and things like that. Um but Pennsylvania has, you know, the town center district uh provisions through you know, within the uh MPC that talks about what that is and and what the community can do and use that. Um the village uh district overlay is something provided for, it's very unique and it's very prescribed uh to a certain extent uh within the Connecticut state statute. So you know, those are the types of things we're aware of, we wanna look at, we wanna understand um how that is a tool that you might be able to leverage uh in, you know, if it makes sense.
Well, one more question. On on the issue of tools, I'm I'm curious about how user friendly um the code would be if it was if we engage with Ecode and had this available to town residents and anybody who wanted access to it. Is it, it what do you hear? What feedback do you get?
So, yeah.
About how informative and easy to use is?
Very helpful, uh as it has a much better search feature. But you know, you can have a Word document, a PDF and use search and it'll give you back where that term is. Um in Ecode, there's a much uh stronger way that it can connect and send you to different sections. Um you probably experienced that with your code now, it has the active links between sections, there's a reference number, you can click that, it takes you right there uh as as part of that process. From the end user perspective and the general public, seventy percent?
Seventy, over seventy.
Over seventy percent of Ecode searches across the various states that um general code works in include the word zoning. So the fact that that is not something currently in your Ecode, it's it makes it a little diffi- more difficult, right, to to be able to, if you you search Thomas Simsbury code, you get Ecode, right? And then you might be saying, well, where am I going for the zoning code? Um they do have uh current, I'm I'm not sure what your current level of of hosting, uh you know, s- subscription or or package is. Um but you know, as I I mentioned, there's been much more advanced tools um that can incorporate any level of graphics. Um and and MapLink itself is just a a really awesome, incredible tool. But you know, again, we have those relationships, we can work with them um to make sure we're maximizing the user friendliness of that if you wanted to integrate it.
Yeah, and I'll add a couple things. One, we have no financial relationship with general code, so we're not trying to get a commission off of this or anything else. It's just a tool that we think is effective as practitioners. And and I say this to our contact over there, what that wasn't always the case. I mean, earlier in my career, as Molly alluded to a little bit ago, the us planners would make these really nice zoning codes with good formatting and good graphics and Ecode would just obliterate all that and it was just a, you know, just a word.
All the tables are attachment, so yeah.
Yeah, it was just cumbersome. So you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, my thoughts on Ecode as a practitioner was very different than what they are today. You know, it's it's really evolved, to their credit, it evolved um to a quite a powerful tool.
What's their market penetration like in Connecticut?
I don't know.
We can find out.
Yeah, we can.
We can, we can find out.
I think it's pretty high from what I've seen.
I have yet to find one that a a community that does not use Ecode. I know it is very common and it's something we've discussed with them that for the zoning codes in Connecticut communities to not be a part of their Ecode. And our just conversations is, we'd love to make sure that that functionality is is a is a part of it, right? Um so you know, again, I think that might be an element of the past limitations of zoning uh in Ecode, but that's not really a barrier, so.
So I know this is this is this is their interview, but just just to divent divent staff a little bit. Um we certainly are well aware of of the need and prior and and have prioritized placing our code uh on Ecode and on general code, because the rest of the town code is on there. But you know, we had planned to do it after we get through this process.
Sure, that makes sense.
It's not like we haven't been thinking about it, just so you know.
But all we, but we have the material ready to hand over.
Well, so will you create something in a Microsoft Word document that we can later then
Yes.
input into this?
Yeah, yep.
Now what is your timeframe for doing the project?
We had mapped it out over an eighteen month.
Eighteen, okay.
Yep, timeframe, uh give or take. Sometimes it, you know, varies depending on, you know, some communities, we get to a point where we don't wanna hold that public meeting in the summer. So you know, we're looking at some of those modifications, but yeah, eighteen months.
Or we spent.
But and and the price was? Uh, twelve?
Twenty-eight.
One twenty-five, okay.
Sometimes you get caught up talking about chickens for three meetings and that's that's.
That 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 will certainly happen.
Again, all the all the submissions are within the budgetary allocation.
Hopefully not here.
I I didn't quite get to that.
Yeah, all the submissions are within.
Yes.
Uh I I I'll say one thing, so you guys talked about being compliant with Connecticut law, twenty-one, twenty-nine. Um we're not supposed to use the term character in our regs, correct? So that's just one thing I wanna make sure that like, you guys mentioned it, people talk about character all the time, but we just gotta make sure that if we're helping us write our regs, it doesn't end up there. That's that's certainly not gonna help us legally.
No, that's and that's a that's a great point because one of the things is we actually don't like to use that term, because what's your interpretation of character? And we see that we see that as a tri- as a it becomes stripped up in a lot of codes. Um because you might, there might be a a district or some regulations where you are trying to match and maintain and follow existing character. There might be somewhere it, the idea is a wholesale transition and and move away and kind of redevelopment, redefining what that is. So we prefer to let the districts and some of the purpose statements and things speak to the element of character, walkability, uh you know, pedestrian engaging, storefronts, streetscapes, um things like that to make sure that it is very clear what the context is.
So use different terminology.
Mm-hmm, and the part of that is also making sure that it's reflective of and and tying to what your plan says. Um you know, there's certainly some very uh specific uh identification of character in in various areas, so.
Character could like, oh, no more than three-story height or something like that.
Mm-hmm, ex- absolutely.
Yeah, we've run into s- a lot of codes where they'll say, you know, complement or be consistent with existing character, but their plan wants that character to change. So the plan says one thing, but the code is actually working against it. Um yeah, so those are the the character can get you in trouble.
Well, I think years ago, we created a ridge line view regulation that you can't clear cut the top of the ridge, you leave it natural, you know, if even if you're building some houses there, they can't cut their trees down there.
Mr. Chair, maybe one last question, we kind of did forty-five minutes with with each, so we're right at forty-four minutes.
Oh, one last one last question, somebody must be dying to ask one of our.
Thank you.
You're really clear.
Jackie, did you have one?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
I have lots of notes.
Alright, I think we'll uh we'll call it done.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all.
And and regardless of who you choose, good luck, this is a very important project.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All of us have been through it before, so.
You got battle scars to show for it.
Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a great night.
Yeah.
Thank you too, Kay.
Safe drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How how long is it?
I'll open you.
But you're right, you're absolutely right.
Probably like six hours.
Just one, there's just one.
I've been around since I've flown.
Uh it's a one.
Oh, really?
Wait for a rainstorm to take it down.
It's a hike, is there just one?
Yeah, six, six and a half hours.
Never really read you, but I might be mixing up.
I've driven on my way to your way.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can we table the discussion?
I'm pretty exhausted.
Yeah, this is long.
It's a lot to absorb, so.
I would talk through the chair, don't look at me.
I don't know, Mr.
Well, yeah, I've.
Let's just see where you are right now, where.
It's a it's a different take on it, I'm sure. The third group is, I don't think it's close in my mind. This group is the strongest match for our proposal, the strongest uh would become the strongest asset of the three in the next couple of years, the work that they would do for us. And uh I don't have any doubt about it. And I'm very impressed with Molly, that uh there is a woman who can lead this, you know, from a technical and organizational process.
I do love that.
I'm very impressed, yeah.
I do not love that they are not like more local to Connecticut.
Totally agree, yeah.
That I feel like, I I I I completely agree that they can do the job, but I definitely think that it's like I have a slight reservations about that. They were really clear about like the number of engagements that they have, whereas the other ones were a little bit more seemingly like willing to kind of like work. It it felt, this one felt very like, which maybe that's what we want, but at the same time.
Well, that's what we wanted in the proposal, that's why we.
I feel like the other ones were maybe more of like a ebb and flow, like back and forth, so.
Yeah, I agree with Kate.
I think, I think the third, yeah, I think the third group is gonna get caught chasing its ch- tail trying to figure out what character means.
Oh.
I think they're gonna run around doing their little surveys and then they're never gonna come up with a a unified plan of what the town, they want the town to look like, cuz there is no unified plan of what the town should look like. And I don't think they'll ever come to any conclusions.
I don't agree with that.
I do that.
Tony, oh sorry, Tony wanted to say something.
I I think the third presenters were very professional, excellent. I'm very concerned about their lack of experience with Connecticut.
Yeah, yeah.
Um and that's, you know, that would cause me to downgrade them. I think the other two uh also presented well and uh they have a lot of experience uh with Connecticut.
Agree.
I think there's some unique elements to Connecticut that um you know, they're obviously very talented, uh have a lot of resources and come up to speed, but that's, you know, if I had to choose this evening, I would not choose them just because of that.
Agree.
Lack of Connecticut experience.
So my, no, I noted that the the first two, the Goman in New York, it they were only gonna need a hundred and eighty-eight hours versus the other one is gonna use six hundred hours to do the job. So I'm wondering, what is the difference with, you know, many times uh
Twenty-five thousand.
the time investment and but whereas the Goman in New York guy, it's like he'd already reviewed the regs and told us, uh I've already found some things.
They're familiar. They're familiar with Simsbury, so I think that's why.
I did, and and it and it's.
I did not like that.
He didn't like them.
So we're gonna spend ninety-five thousand dollars for him to change a couple commas and like, you know, make make a smoother product,
No.
but basically keep everything existing as is?
See, I was very.
That's that's that was, that's why would be my concern, it's just ninety-five thousand dollars, it's a little cheaper, a little faster, what what changes?
That was my.
No, I my feeling about him, he was going, they have experience in analyzing real estate and economic development and and putting the spin on it as to, all right, what are the things we might wanna change in character or development or whatever? And how do we create zoning to help meet our goals? And and that he was more or more, he's more of a planner than a technician.
He's a planner.
Why why he is, yes, but but in other words.
His experience is is he's used to going to a small town that needs to develop from the ground up, that has never had anything and needs to build something new in order to bring in a Panera, which.
I think they had varied experiences.
An insane thing for a town to want in their town, by the way, a Panera. But um I think that's like I I the the talk of infill development, we have the the places in Simsbury that are developed have been previously developed. We don't need to go into a new place and build something, we need to put things on places that already exist. And I think I think the first group's experience was much more relevant to that. The first group is more about like a tiny little town, they find a patch of woods and they put a, you know, a a Dunkin' Donuts there.
See, we, I'll I'll argue that the Goman in New York group looked through our regs, they did their homework, they were impressed by what we had and they saw where we could do some work. And I thought that's very beneficial to us, cuz they looked at it, they said we have charts and tables, but maybe we could use some more.
Well, who are you talking about?
I'm talking about Goman in New York.
No, I mean the second.
True.
The second group, go ahead.
Right, can I speak?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Hi. Um so I really did not like the second group, like I found him very flippant, I found him very dismissive and I found him very boring, old. It's kind of old news, I did not like his word, his sort of explanation of how he felt about the word character, that did not sit well with me at all. Um I would say that like the third group, no, they're not local, but like, or they're not in Connecticut. I understand that we need a Connecticut perspective perhaps, but do we always need, I mean, can we look outside the box a little bit and be creative? I don't know if they can do that, but that was my original takeaway. The the first group would be my second choice, I I really did not.
So you didn't like it?
I did not like it. Didn't like it.
I was unsure when they first started, but um they grew on me as they presented and I felt like they were.
Which one?
Where's that?
Goman, Goman in New York, they just it, they did feel like the most personal to me.
Yeah.
Um the first group I liked quite a bit when they presented, but I felt like they spent a lot of time talking about their qualifications and sort of like how great they were and I kind of appreciated it.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I would have liked to have um had more focus on, like they answered the question, so I'm like okay with it and I think that they are qualified, um but I would have liked to have like more focus on that and a little bit less focus on like their testimonials was like a little too much for me, but I wouldn't rule them out because of that, it's just that was like the downside of that group.
You don't have to rule anybody out, I need to identify which one is the best fit for our request.
No, no.
I was very impressed by the first group's answer on, uh cuz I the ans- I I didn't expect them to answer it so well. What do you do with the town? You you mentioned TOD, how do you how do you transfer it to development in a town that has very little transit? And they said they they exactly were correct in that, well, it used to be. The everything is designed around the train tracks, even the the train tracks are gone. That is good insight into the 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 town that that uh is is it's uh I do, are are they as familiar? Have they read thirty years of our our zoning news? Maybe not, but they they clearly identified like, this is how this town was built and they were correct, like right off the rip.
And I liked Collier's graphics and stuff, but I it concerned me that their examples were all.
That was Goman in New York, you're talking?
No, first group.
Not here.
West and they were all like not examples that were similar to Simsbury, it was like West Haven and
Yep.
and it and it felt to me like they either don't have any experience in a town like ours
Yep.
or their outsider-ness caused them to not realize that we're not the same as, like that that wasn't a great example.
That's how I find it.
I didn't know, I don't know which and maybe that's okay, I'm not, I I I honestly, like, it's not like I thought any of them would do a horrible job.
Right.
But I just.
Still in their.
Well.
But even number one, I would say to your point, though, Tucker, I was looking at where they have worked and they've worked in Danbury, they've worked in Hartford, I mean, they've worked in cities, that's not us.
Some smaller ones too.
Some smaller ones too.
They did, they did, whereas the third one did not, like you said, they had West Haven
Right, well, yes. But.
and then they had New Haven, which is even bigger.
And Hartford.
And Hartford.
But they had smaller towns that weren't necessarily Connecticut, like.
Right, but that's, we're speaking to Connecticut, that's my whole point.
Oh, their experience is much larger than Connecticut.
I guess that's.
Right.
That's my whole point.
And so you're dismissing all that because it's not.
Because we were having zoning regs written in Simsbury, Connecticut.
Yeah.
I'm not dismissing that, I think they're very experienced, I would just like uh some element of knowledge and experience with Connecticut. I mean, Connecticut has some unique issues that um need to be addressed and I don't want them ramping up um to address those issues.
Well. So the first one, Franz Francisco lives in Farmington.
Yeah.
And the other guy lives in West Hartford. And they've got years of experience in Connecticut towns.
Yeah.
And they, so they were gonna spend six hundred hours on the project, meaning they were gonna be thorough and then and they had a very logical layout of what they're gonna do line by line, kind of.
Yeah.
To thoroughly analyze and revise our regs.
Which is number three.
Number one.
No, number one.
Number the first one.
The the first one, Francisco, the FHI that changed its name to, I am.
Yeah. Yeah, that's confusing.
And but I mean, somehow I think they might be the best fit, though I kind of liked the guy that Shannon hates.
Shannon didn't like it.
Just because I think he's really, he's been doing it for thirty years and knows his stuff and.
I I know, but he his comments that were connected with our zoning code, he even said it, he only spent a couple hours looking at it today
Well, yeah.
and he came up with all that in a couple of hours.
Yeah.
That's a lightweight touch to come over here. They've had, they did this proposal last summer, in the late part of the summer.
In August, I think.
And and now they're looking at the zoning regulations? I don't think that's a great.
Well, did the others look at our zoning regs?
Certainly, they all they all they they all mentioned it.
They did.
I don't know.
I don't remember them for taking it anyway.
We all heard that.
Molly, well, they had some specific comments about our zoning regs.
Yeah.
I liked her a lot, I I liked her, I liked Molly, I just have the concern about the.
And she's very professional.
I liked her.
It's not you.
Sure.
So number two was the only one that discussed our EV regs, our dark skies, and wait, okay, and the only one that discussed affordable housing.
That is true.
Yes.
We already have.
We've said, it was just the only one of three, I'm just saying, just keep it in mind of what our priorities are.
Right. Yep.
Okay, but.
We we already have a, we already have inclusionary zoning reg now, I mean, are we gonna rebuild rebuild it?
And we're gonna have dark skies as of our.
Next.
We're already looking at dark skies, we already have ADU regs, I mean, so he mentioned, those are good things to mention for sure, but. And you know, and he mentioned our sign regs, I feel like any any competent uh, consulting group could could pick sign regs.
But I think it's the next though, was, as he said, just, he could, he could quote for us the uh, issues from the town of Simsbury over the last thirty years, he reads the Hartford Current.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah, he reads the Hartford Current.
And and that is not something that I didn't appreciate, I do appreciate that he had that level of knowledge, but I mean, the guy was on his phone while we were talking.
Yeah.
I I didn't, I didn't feel like they weren't engaged, I did not get that vibe, but I I liked what he said about.
Was he?
No. Cause I was hyped, I, trust me.
I just, he's just.
Watch the tapes.
He's just talking to me as being more informal than he.
Yeah, cause I I don't, you know, that's.
I don't have a problem.
I don't have an issue with that.
But I like that he said that he would push us, I like that part. I like that he said he would push us, and I like that he thought about, that he talked about getting to like the why, cause I feel like sometimes it might, our regs might work legally. But it's like, why, like how did we get to this point, it was like the decision that got made and another decision that got made and another decision, and all of a sudden you have all these things. And you kinda lost where you got, like why you got to that in the first place, and maybe it doesn't even make sense, and I liked that he kinda called that out and said that he was gonna look at that, but that was a positive for him. I'm not like helping with the decision, I'm just.
What I also really liked about the third group is that their um, their their packaging of how we deliver this to constituents. And how we engage the public was really far and above any of the others, and that's the third group.
Like who was that?
They, they certainly have a have a comprehensive view of.
Third group.
You think so?
Absolutely.
I thought the first group also was gonna do that.
They also.
They were fine, but I thought this was, I thought the third group is better.
Yeah.
It's better.
The third group had more to their plan, and I don't think it's gonna work, I don't think it's, unfortunately, I don't think it's a good plan.
Correct.
What?
Okay, Tucker, who who do you like, Tucker?
What's the plan of what?
I like the first group, I I look, I I like, I liked all of them, I, you know, I did negative Nancy over here, but I mean, I my first, first was my clear preference.
Are you talking to me?
Probably that what, no, I'm negative Nancy.
No, your name is Shannon, I mean.
I've seen you.
No, 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 no.
He called himself Nancy.
I prefer, I prefer the first group, and and not because I didn't like the other twos, the I, the I I identified issues with the other two, I didn't really identify any problems with the first one.
He's teasing you.
I was like, that was very solid, and I don't have any concerns, the other two, I have too many concerns about character, and I think their their mode of engagement is not gonna pan out for them.
Well, I I would agree with that, I would agree with that. Yeah.
Um, and the second one, I just thought was a little bit, a little bit small time and not quite as um, ambitious i- enough, that was all.
Well, I like the first group because I think they hit all the points in what we need to have done. And they said we will always be on budget, even if they need to put more time in, they're not gonna charge us more.
Yeah.
They all said that.
Yeah, they all said it.
They did.
They all said that. They also said it's your fault, apparently.
They all said that, they did say that, like I I completely understand why they would say that, of course, probably.
Of course, of course, probably.
Yeah.
But and they said everything, well, they they had all these testimonials about how wonderful they are from Glastonbury and Farmington or wherever. And who's, and they said they have never uh, had, you know, failed a legal challenge or, you know, been sued by, because of how they drafted their regs. Uh, and I I just have a feeling they would do a very thorough analytical job and have public meetings, et cetera. Whereas the the people from Rochester would have to do a lot of it remotely.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what their proposal said, they're talking about eight, eight of the monthly meetings, or they're not exactly monthly, they're timed.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Stages of it.
Right, so do we wanna deal with a Zoom consultant, or do we want somebody local?
It's in three of the eight. Three of the eight.
Well, I I agree, I liked one and two are more local, I do like them.
I liked the diagrams that the third team put up there though and showed, and I, but I do think that the first team indicated that they would also be, they didn't show you though, but they said they had graphics people.
So they all have graphics.
They all, they all have, they all have graphics people, they all have.
And and so then what I loved is how our own planner said, well, we can adapt it to the new EEC code or whatever this computer system is.
I mean, they they got a positive, they got a positive, the first group got a positive referral from Margarita, uh, from from Greenwich, that is, that's, that is not easy to do.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, but would you breathe it?
Do you know her?
Yes.
You do?
A tape of.
From where?
It's uh, for my old job.
Raising hell and swearing, of course not.
Really?
It was a glowing review.
Cause I grew up in Greenwich.
What'd you say?
I grew up in Greenwich, and I was just there last weekend.
Yeah, wait, uh, I had many interactions with her in my old job.
I'm just a quick question for us.
Very impressed that she gave him a positive.
Well, so that's another reason to like number one.
So a quick question for our town planner.
Yes, sir.
That would be you, George.
Right here, yes, sir.
Uh, could you, I'm I'm assuming that you uh, followed up with references and there are no issues that arose?
But you're.
I have, and uh. Each and every one of them was positive for each of the three selected finalists this evening. Yeah, thank you.
So. The third one, we have, they've worked in Simsbury, they did not bring it up in their presentation. Um, I don't know if they were not aware because it wasn't writing our regs, so it might have been a different department, but while I was on the Board of Selectmen, they were working on the Henry James Project. And I think if we talk to some other people, they.
You mean the renovation?
Yes, I don't think they would get a recommendation.
The third one, uh.
You wouldn't, Henry James?
That was probably their architect firm though.
No, it wasn't, well, I don't think it was the architects.
It wasn't.
It was the engineering and OPM side of things.
They have been the engineer.
Oh.
Uh, the first group did the East Weetalk Historic District.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, I like that.
Mm-hmm.
I never heard of the book.
Neither have I, but it's it's on their thing.
I never heard.
I know.
It's my personal. Um.
So, what are we, what are we doing here, Mr. Chairman?
Put our ideas up, do we need to make a decision right now, do we wanna just?
Well, yeah, yeah.
But how are we gonna make a better decision if we wait a week or two?
Sounds to me that there's at least four votes for one of these, one of them.
Exactly.
Is there?
Do we rank them?
I don't think we rank them, do we just choose one?
Well, here's the thing, the, um, there's a question of should we be voting tonight, or should we push this off into some day in the future? I feel more certain.
I don't.
Will we know more?
Or 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 wait a second.
We just had the discussion, but why wouldn't vote tonight?
Well, here, then, okay, then then another scenario is, we just, uh, you know, in order to see if there's four votes here for one of these organizations. If we start with Jackie, which one do you prefer, just no comments other than what, which one do you prefer, not which ones do you like, which one do you prefer, we have three choices.
Number two.
Number two.
One, two, three, okay. Alright, so Jackie's number two, Tucker, which one are you?
Number one.
Three.
I could have been wrong.
And I'm number three.
And you're number three?
Yes, I am, I'm I'm positive.
You are?
Positive.
Long distance.
Okay, so he's he's three, uh, I'm one, yeah.
Um, I think I'm really on the fence between one and two, I think one, um, I would also vote for two if that, I obviously think it's not getting to the majority, but I would vote for two.
Agreed, no, I agree.
Um, if that was a a winning thing.
So who's your preference, one or one?
One.
I, I liked a lot about two, I li- I thought three was very professional, I know.
Just a number. Straight up number.
One, two, or three, one, two, or three?
Uh, my safe choice is one.
So it sounds like this.
That's four for one. That is four for one.
And I I would vote for one.
And I would vote for one.
But you already voted for somebody else.
I know, but I'm just saying, just saying, she's saying like, if we were to say two, she's gonna really really have a discussion about it.
So, but these aren't official, those aren't official votes, right?
Well, so we're making rank choice.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Rank choice voting, no.
Well, we just did.
I did, cuz.
That's. What did you vote?
Okay.
I voted for one, uh, I mean, it sounds like we have four vote, can I?
So we have four votes for one.
You do.
Uh, can I, can I make a motion to uh, accept the FHI proposal? Is that, had I? So this is what I would suggest, I would suggest that the commission direct staff to negotiate a scope and contract with X.
FHI studio.
Does that have to be a motion? Okay, I move, I move that uh, staff, I move that the commission direct staff to negotiate a contract, um, including price and scope with FHI.
So.
Second?
Tony seconded. Any other discussion on that motion?
Well, yeah, but what I liked is he said he could be our consultant and, you know, just, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who seconded that?
Tony.
Tony.
Well, let me just hear the motion one more time.
Yeah, so before he says the motion, this is, this is how it 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 would typically work. You select a consultant, you direct staff to negotiate essentially a final scope contract and price, which we essentially bring that back to you for full ratification. Right, we, you need to, you need to empower us to negotiate with it, with a preferred.
Absolutely.
Yes. Vendor, and 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 there will be tweaks to the scope and that kinda stuff that will, you total number of meetings, whether they're virtual or not, that. Yeah.